Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Mayor and City Council Combined Meeting on Monday, May 12th, 2025. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am with the United States of America and in your public which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please show all council members present except for Councilmember Fuller. Up next, we have the approval of the minutes from the April 9th, 2025, and April 14th, 2025, regular meetings. Looking for a motion regards to that?
To approve the minutes from the meetings from April?
Looking for a second?
I will second.
Any further comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Next up, we have council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council members like to make a statement today? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Public comment pertaining to non-agenda items? Do we have a public comment pertaining to non-agenda items? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Resolution ordinances and agreements. Up for adoption, we have Resolution 2025-06, water allocation for May. Jim, just to check on this. Nevermind. Yeah, it's a resolution. Looking for a motion regards to it?
Motion to approve the water allocation.
Looking for a second? Any additional comments, questions, concerns from council? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Harry's. Up next, we have City Manager report. Jim, lead us off on that.
Okay, just a few updates for this month on the stormwater front. On the meeting, the next meeting agenda will be the award, hopefully the award of bid for the Riffles Lane Storm Drain Project. So, we finally were able to get that out to bid, got a number of bids, and the recommendation memo will be part of the upcoming meeting packet. So, that's really a little more for the next meeting, but since you guys were the ones who have been dealing with this for the last couple of years, it's finally going to the construction phase. Other thing, Westview Drive Waterline replacement construction is ongoing. The second segment has been connected, so we're moving right along there. Let's see, I don't think bacteria testing has been completed for the second section, so more updates coming next time around on that, but the project's moving along very well. That's really about all that I've got. Not a lot of updates on the other stuff, Planning Commission or equipment, things like that. So, that's what I've got. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the City Manager?
I just have one, the phosphorus spike on the...
Yes. They have been doing some experimentation at the treatment plant with a replacement for perchloride, I believe it is, and the numbers were fluctuating because of that. So, it did spike, but we have no concern that we won't be able to bring it back down low enough to put us back on target.
Go back to what we were doing and make it right. Has the drought contributed at all to that, or do you know?
It is possible that because there's, even though we've been addressing inflow and infiltration for the last few years, it still is, you know, present in the system. So, the dry weather flows do tend to be a more, if you'll say, concentrated nutrient load. But, the guys at the plant are testing the inflow regularly to try to adjust for that, but that could be a factor as well.
Out to me, so I thought I asked the question.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns for the City Manager? Hearing none, proceeding forward. Department reports. Any comments, questions, concerns on department reports? Hearing none, proceeding forward.
I have one question. Kevin in his report talked about water concerns, about the dry weather and voluntary water control, the fact that we're gonna have a car wash time at the police station. He recommended against that. Have we thought about that? Is that a concern? Is that something we should be worried about?
Just a... I'm not concerned for it. It's really, it's something they've had planned for a couple of months now.
Go through this every year.
And I understand from reading the report from the county that there was a little bit of concern about one well being at eighty, you know, I guess at eighty-five percent, and it's at fifteenth percentile, which I assume that means it's eighty-five percent. But, that was the only well that they cited. Is there... Without calling up the, I don't have that in front of me, without calling up the big chart, is that...
I mean, I... It was just a, it wasn't very specific recommendation. He just recommended we didn't hold the car wash at this time, and I don't know whether there was something behind that that he had in his mind that may cause disruption.
I think it was just the general concern about additional water usage during a period that we're trying to conserve overall, even though at this point it's voluntary conservation measures.
Everybody's all right with it. I'm all right with it too.
Additional comments, questions, concerns regarding department reports? Hearing none, proceeding forward to legal report. Jim, do you got anything for us on legal report?
About this evening?
Old business, Sabal's addition annexation. What were you looking for in regards to this tonight?
No action, just a quick update that the hearing is, we've heard from, got the comment letter from the Maryland Department of Planning, we're still chugging along on that, and the hearing is scheduled for next month.
Sounds good. Any comments, questions, concerns regarding that? Hearing none, proceeding down. Public comment pertaining to agenda items? Do we have any public comment pertaining to agenda items? Hearing none, proceeding forward, or proceeding down to council member reports, starting with Councilmember Tillman.
Okay, we are plugging along in the Planning Commission, you know, as best we can in light of what happened. But, we are still, you know, there is still things to be done and things to be taken care of. Had a good meeting, had a lot to cover, especially talking about Mountain Brook and where we stand regards to the road that would have to cross the Low Serv property. That's, you know, those are ongoing concerns and things that we're, you know, keeping an eye on. In the comprehensive plan update, we had another really good meeting. We are getting ready to start with the key person interviews. If those have not started already, you know, Jim, if they've started with those?
I know at least invitations for scheduling have gone out, if nothing else.
And I know we have a few sections that we started to, that are nearing completion that we're starting to review, so we are moving ahead with that. And we are, you know, always welcoming feedback and participation. Our next meeting is May 20th at 6:30 here in chambers, so folks are invited to come and be part of our process. We would really like to have that. One other thing that I was involved with, or got involved with, the county is in the midst of their comprehensive plan update, and they are, they've done a housing study, and there are several other large portions of their update that they're, they have committees working on, and I have joined the housing group. So, we met last Monday, obviously we're not meeting tonight, but we are meeting again next Monday, and discussing, and a lot of what we are discussing at the county level is going to be applicable to the things that we do here in Tawny Town, so I hope to be able to bring back good information from those, from those meetings.
Chaney?
Okay, I have the Tawny Town Police Department statistical report for April. There were 479 total dispatched calls for service. There were 77 total citations issued and 236 warnings issued. There were seven adult arrests in April and two juvenile arrests. In good news, the Tawny Town Police Department added a new officer in April. Zach Myers was hired on April 21st and will be going through field training. Ms. Ingalls completed a child safety seat event during the month of April in conjunction with State Farm Insurance. Ms. Ingalls also assisted with many car seat installation requests at the police station during the month of April. And Officer Beck participated in the American Legion Family Fun Day on April 26th. As far as training, all active officers participated in a use of force training that was two hours long, a two-hour de-escalation strategies and techniques training, and a one-hour cultural awareness and diversity overview. In specialized training, Sergeant Salt and PFC Darby completed Red Dot Sight Handgun Instructor Course through Sage Dynamics in Lansdale, Pennsylvania, on 4/7 through 4/9. This three-day course consisted of 24 hours of training and will aid in the RDS conversion process that the department plans on completing in the very near future. Lieutenant Castalar, Corporal Schaefer, Corporal Marshall, Master Patrol Officer Sakadales, and PFC Blaze completed annual firearms, classroom, handgun, day fire qualifications, handgun low-light qualifications, judgmental shooting drills, rifle qualifications, and less lethal impact munitions classroom and qualifications. These qualifications and training were conducted on April 10th, 2025.
Mayor Pro Tim and Karen?
Very little, other than just to congratulate our soon-to-be new council members. Look forward to working for them over the next couple of years. One comment, I'm sorry, disappointed we didn't have a bigger turnout for our election. That's a shame, but I'm glad. Thank you for the folks that did come out and look forward to another couple of years. That's all I have.
Sounds good. Councilmember Foster?
Under DPW, Monumental Paving has completed a final walk-through with CDM Smith and the city. Monumental, they were in in April to address all grass areas where new topsoil and reseeding the areas as well. The Carroll County Erosion and Sediment Control Inspector also allowed for the removal of the sediment controls in all areas as well. As long as the new seed takes, this will close out this project. West Drive Waterman Replacement, Phase One, section of the water main from Harney Road, past Tawny Town Crossing has been installed, pressure tested and passed. The time of the council meeting service lines for this area will be connected to the new water main, and Phase Two Temporary Water Main will be installed. Stumptown Road Emergency Repairs, a major repair and safety addition near Roberts Mill Park started on March 17th. Due to the five springs found under the roadbed, this project lingered longer than expected. Additional time was needed to install drain tiles to allow water from these springs to be removed from under the road. Also, additional reinforcement of the roadbed was needed in these areas. Stumptown Road will be open during the first week of May.
Sounds good. Thank you. Councilmember Fullers isn't here, so I'll go over some of the Parks and Rec stuff we got going on. We have the spring scavenger hunt going on right now at Bolinger Park, you know, take a look out for that. Next up, we got the Spring Community Flea Market that's gonna happen this weekend at Memorial Park from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And then, on the 26th, we're gonna have a Memorial Day Ceremony and Parade. The ceremony will be at Memorial Park at 10:00 a.m., which will then be followed by a parade along Main Street, and that'll be at 1:00 p.m. So, other than that, I want to thank Councilmember Foster, Fuller, and Councilmember Chaney for, again, your service here on the council, and, you know, I gotta say, it was a pleasure working with you, Councilmember Chaney, Foster, and Fuller, regardless of our differences, you know, pleasure working with you both. So, thank you all. I appreciate it. Looking for a motion of adjournment unless anybody's got anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
For a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our second Mayor and City Council Combined Meeting for the day, Monday, May 12th, 2025. If you'd please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Please show the current council of Mayor Pro Tim and Councilmember Tillman. We will now go into oath of office. So, first up, I'm gonna go by order of papers I have here. Rachel Miller, come on up.
I, Rachel Miller.
I, Rachel Miller.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. And support the Constitution and laws thereof. And I go to the best of my skill and judgment. Without your prejudice. Okay, up next, we got... I, Harry Mead.
I, Harry Mead.
I will support. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the same. Laws thereof.
And support the Constitution.
I go to the best of my skill and judgment. Office of Councilmember. House of this state.
Kalanock.
Kalanock.
Kalanock. Raise your right hand or repeat after me. I, Stephen Nick.
Kalanock.
Kalanock. Do you swear that I will support the Constitution?
I, Stephen Nick Kalanock, do swear that I will support the Constitution.
The United States. And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. And I support the Constitution. And laws thereof.
And laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will to the best of my.
Diligently and faithfully and faithfully. Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of councilmember.
Execute the office of councilmember.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
All right.
Photo of everybody.
All right.
We'll get it later.
Different, that's for sure. Okay, up first, we have election of Mayor Pro Tim. I will entertain nominations.
I nominate Rachel Miller.
Okay, we'll go to voting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay. Harry's. Congratulations, Mayor Pro Tim. Up next, we have council liaison assignments, starting from the left. Councilmember Kalanock will give you Parks and Rec.
Good.
Mayor Pro Tim Miller will give you Police Department. Councilmember Mead, we will give you Plan and Zoning. Councilmember Tillman, we will give you Economic Development. Councilmember Karen, Public Works. With that, Jim, did you get all the assignments? Sounds good. Up next, we have council member's statement regarding conflicts of interest on agenda items. Would any council member like to declare a conflict of interest?
Oh, got it. Nevermind. I thought we were getting paper copies.
Only if you elect. If you elect after this, they'll have a paper copy for you.
Okay. Do you mind if I, uh...
Okay, up next, we have proclamation poppy day. For anybody not familiar, this year, May 23rd, around the nation, you know, they're looking to declare, the May 23rd is poppy day. I'm gonna read off the proclamation. We're gonna get it signed, and I'm gonna distribute out some poppies out to council members at the end of this to distribute to friends, family, and we're also gonna try to get some out to businesses. Proclamation, City of Tawny Town, Maryland. Whereas, America is the land of freedom, preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers, whereas millions who have answered the call to arms have died on the field of battle, whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war, whereas the red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice of lives in all wars, and whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Therefore, I, Christopher G. Miller, the mayor of Tawny, the mayor of the City of Tawny Town, do hereby proclaim May 23rd, 2025, as poppy day, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy on this day. And witness thereof, I have set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Tawny Town on this day, May 12th, 2025. That is the proclamation. Again, I'm gonna distribute some poppies out to council members at the end of this to give out to friends, family, and again, if you know of any businesses that'll take them, I'm gonna be distributing them out to businesses as well. Yeah. Again, I want to thank the American Legion for bringing that to our attention and asking that we proclaim that. Up next, we have public comment pertaining to non-agenda items. Do we have public comment pertaining to non-agenda items?
Paul Cluth. Right. Resident and business owner in Tawny Town, recent voter and taxpayer. Seeing that economic development in Main Street wasn't on the agenda for tonight in this session, I wanted to encourage the new slate of councilmen not to let economic development, the hiring of the new director and Main Street manager, and the continuation of the Main Street workshop fall by the wayside. The turnaround of this department's failings over the past 18 months, partial failings, I'll clarify that, not entirely, but partial, has to be a top priority. I also want to encourage the new councilmen especially to get out and visit with the businesses, the business owners in the downtown, the Main Street area, outside of the downtown and within city limits, of course, and also the surrounding community to build rapport and to understand what the needs are of the business owners. Kind of get in with the owners and understand how they feel and what their needs are. This also includes nonprofits, churches, and some of the farmers even, not to mention the senior center, the museum folk, and other stakeholder organizations. At the same time, I want to welcome the new councilmen, and congratulations on winning your positions. You're winning the election. So, that's all, but I just wanted to emphasize that. And I guess, Harry, since you're gonna be the overseer of economic development...
Tillman. Councilmember Tillman.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm planning and zoning.
Oh, planning and zoning. Well, you kind of crisscross a little bit.
Tried to cross you up like that, Paul.
Well, Chris, look forward to continued discussions about economic development and all the good things that the city can become.
I don't think that there could be any doubt of where my passions lie. I look forward to, I look forward to moving the ship forward in the several directions that it needs to go.
I'm looking forward to seeing, you know, from a personal standpoint, that this can be a home run and can be a real positive thing for the community. It certainly is a stronghold because it has implications across everything in the town.
And I do want, sorry, Paul, I just want to clarify two things. On the appointment, we're hoping to have an appointment within the next two weeks. We're still working on some background stuff. In addition to that, while it's not in the name of any of the introductions or adoptions for the legislative priority, I know it's in the legislative priority for within, I think, 90 days to have the Main Street Committee back up and running, or at least the framework of one. So, it is on their minds. It is a topic of concern, and again, we'll see how that goes as we get down the chart here, but I want you to note, it hasn't fallen, by the way, aside on anyone. It's just when we went through the process of finding the EDC, you know, it was asked that we went through the full process of it. So, and unfortunately, that does kind of drag it out a little bit.
It can be a team effort, you know, with the businesses and city council and mayor and city, and that's the way it should be, and I think that that's the direction that can easily go. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Any additional public comment pertaining to non-agenda items? Hearing none, proceeding forward. We have a bunch of resolutions, ordinances, and agreements up tonight. First off, we'll start off with ordinance 06-2025, fiscal year 2025-2026. First off, we'll start off with ordinance 06-2025 Fiscal Year 2025-2026 Operating Budget. Again, this is a combined meeting, so I'm gonna ask for a motion, a second, and then we'll go into discussion. So first, I'm gonna ask for a motion in regards to that operating budget.
Approve.
Looking for a second.
We're not, we can't be approving that right now.
My bad.
Introduction.
Oh, it's something for motion to introduce.
Introduce. Looking for a second.
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns? Open it up to the floor of council for that.
Yeah, I've got a few questions, it's a lot of information here. So, on the first page, the fund balance, is that the remaining fund balance after allocations have been made to this budget? The two general fund balance, the general fund and utility fund balance? Are those after allocation?
Give me minutes, pull it up.
Looking for it.
Oh, here it is.
Talking page one, budgeted use of fund balance section, correct?
Yes, yes, sir. I just wanted to clarify what that number represented.
All right, can you point to me?
I'm looking, what I was asking was, is this money being used out of the fund balance or is this what's left?
Is it the starting point or the end point?
That's what's used, that's what's being used, sorry.
For, yeah, that's coming for the capital projects.
Okay, so this is what's being taken out of the utility fund and out of general fund.
Yep, for capital projects.
I just want to be sure what the number represented, that's all.
Right, Jim, I'm correcting that, right, that's numbers coming out for capital projects.
Sorry, I'm having trouble finding the.
Paul's got it.
Oh, there's mine, I was wondering.
I am.
So, I mean, do you want I could go over kind of a base of what I did?
If you want to, again, if you want to do that first before I get into, you know, because I've got a few notes just all the way through the thing, but I, so I have not a lot of questions, but.
So just what, some of the things that are different from our typical budget in this budget is we add some reductions across the departments, you know, across the board there, and some of that's going to fund an additional police officer, and we're gonna be looking to put a police officer in the Drug Task Force of Carroll County with that. Another was to fund a executive administrative assistant position, which will hopefully take off some of the burden of the city manager.
That's a great idea to me.
And I'm trying to think, what else, Jim, I know we have a five percent reduction to water and sewer rates that are currently budgeted in in this budget, right?
Right.
Then, was there any other major changes I'm forgetting?
The, I guess, the highlights that I had noted was we eliminated one crossing guard position. We're reclassing the Police Department Secretary to adjust the salary there. We're adding two full-time equivalents, the executive administrative assistant and one police officer. And then, obviously, we, in order not to use more of fund balance to do those changes, we made cuts basically throughout all departments to be able to fund the two new positions.
One other thing in addition to that, for the crossing guard part, the reason why we took that back is we're gonna be looking to put the rapid flashing beacons out there, it's kind of a substitute.
We never did, did we ever fill that position?
We did not, no.
Okay.
The rapid flashing beacons out there, over by the cross, we walk at East, is it Keans Drive, is that what it is out there? Yeah. So, Keans Drive out there where, you know, you have the four crosswalks, you have the yellow signs, we're gonna put flashes on, those essentially here in the future. But that's why we're taking away that crossing guard there, and the position never got filled. I think we only had, what, one, do we have additional applicants, I think we had one total?
I'm only aware of one. And I don't know if that was formally applied or not, I think one expression of interest.
Yeah. And again, the current, you know, the current crossing guard, Roxanne, she's working out at Baumgartner Grape, I've only heard good things about that transition, so.
I mean, that's a real important one.
Yeah, that's the bigger one.
But I think the rapid flashing beacons will be a good.
I think it'll serve the purpose.
Getting the push-button type to activate and push the button and act.
That's what I'm looking towards him.
Just, other thing, there's, under utility fund, there's a four million dollar grant, is that the last of the ARPA funding going to pay for the Roberts Mill Waterline?
Can I ask you what page you're on?
Uh, this is the landscape sheet. Is, it says page one of one, it's the summary of the budget. Like, it was like the second or third sheet in. I'm sorry.
Okay, the quick summary page?
I think you're talking about this one, right? The one that starts with local state tax revenue.
Might just be spread out, yeah, actually.
Oh, you know what, I did, I did print it terms that way. Okay, there we are, all right, so.
I think this is the same, yep.
Yeah, so I just was looking, you know, the four, four point three million dollars grant payment, I just wondered where that, what that was, is that the last?
That's the last of the ARPA that we allocated, right?
I'm still not sure what line you're looking at.
I print, that's right, I printed it, I don't know.
You want me to bring it over your way, Jim? Yeah, I think, I think you guys got it.
Is there?
Under grant payments, under revenue for utility fund.
Okay, so we're looking at utility budget.
Yeah. And it looks like we have, we're projecting a reduction in water and sewer usage because we're projecting lower revenue figures there, and then there's the four point three million dollars, which I assume is the ARPA funding for the water line work that we're doing and the last of the sewer work.
I finally scrolled down far enough to find.
It's not that huge a deal, I'm just trying to clarify where that money came from and what it was for.
I mean, I think you can see the expenditure there in streets, so I'm assuming that's what it is.
And my, I mean, the huge spender of capital outlays.
I'm still not, are you in, are you in utility or general fund?
This is utility fund.
Utility fund, okay.
Yeah, this is grant payments, four million, three hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. Sorry, didn't mean to create such a.
Chaos, Chris.
Where'd I go?
We don't have that. This is, this, oh, okay. But you were looking over here, this is general fund side. I'm gonna have to get back to you on that one.
Okay.
I do not think that is ARPA, we don't have that much ARPA left.
Well, that's why I wondered about it, that's why I wondered where, you know, where we got four million, where four million dollars in grant money came. Yeah. So I just.
I mean, it would be nice.
Yeah, so it's just, I mean, it shows us grant funding, or as grant payments, and so I just was curious from. Other numbers that kind of jumped out at me. Economic development, it shows a decrease, we had a chat about that a few minutes ago. Public safety, obviously, the increase for the additional officer.
Yeah, they, I mean, there decreases as well to offset some of that.
Yeah, I did notice that.
But I think, again, I can't speak for everybody, but when we get to it, you know, I think, my idea at least from this current budget is we need to get an EDC to, you know, and a director in, see what his goal is, see what his plans is, and kind of budget around what he's looking to try to do with the program, what he's looking to try to do with the position. Because if not, you know, we're just budgeting into the wind.
We can circle back to the grant, we're anticipating receiving funding for our PFAS, PFOA treatment.
Ah.
We have not, it has not been formally announced yet, though, so we're anticipating that award.
So that money obviously is promised out already for the filtering. All right. Legal number jumped out at me, but then I looked at, you know, what we've spent current year, and that actually brings that into line.
And that's basically, I mean, that's all we were really trying to do, and with some of this was bringing it to line.
Yep.
So while there are cuts, I mean, they're not.
Yeah, I didn't see any draconian, I just wanted to.
Nothing crazy.
Couple of things that raised questions when I was looking through this. And I noticed one of the other things that, there was a professional fees in the twenty-five budget of sixty-five thousand that we've dropped down to fifteen, but again, I just, looking back, I see we brought that back into line, I didn't know why that number was so high.
Well, and that's what you, if you look through, like, a lot of it, you'll see that most of it is really just bringing it back into line with previous expenditures. Even, you know, there was one thing that we talked about when we were taking from streets, I think it was streets with assault and whatnot, is that while we've had some, you know, slower years, money's definitely, going back to general fund at the end of the year, when we have ninety thousand budgeted and we're only using twenty thousand for the year.
We just, we don't want to, you have to be careful about cutting assault in particular that much because you never know, you know, like we had last one or so.
And I agree in that regard, but my argument would be that, again, we've already, over the years of these past years, we've really had nothing, you know, we're talking fifty thousand difference going back into that.
That's fine, those were the questions that I had, the things that jumped out at me, so that, I'm fine, moving on.
Additional comments, questions, concerns regarding budget?
I would like to hear from council, so staff was directed to present a five percent cut on the utility fund, which we did. But for those who were pushing for that, I'm very curious as to how that is in the city's best interest. And I can certainly throw some numbers around on this one because I was coming prepared for this one, but I'm just very curious if any research was done, why five percent, why, you know, is there something that, why are the rates, why do you believe the rates are higher than they need to be? I'm kind of drawing a blank on this, other than people complain and it's popular to do.
Well, I was gonna say, for me, it was probably the, aside from the traffic, probably the single most complained about thing that I heard about from people was water rates and them being very, very high. So I believe some of the thought process, at least for me, was to at least give a little bit of relief in that department, and then we've also got it later to where we reevaluate in a year to see where things are and how things are doing to make sure that we've been able to hit that and still maintain everything that we're supposed to be maintaining.
I actually might kick it back to you and ask the question, like, is it drawing enough money for us to be able to implement the projects that we want to implement, right? Like, if it doesn't affect solvency or our ability to make capital improvements or anything like that, like, I don't, then I don't understand why you would necessarily need the additional excess, right? So, like, that's my biggest question always, is does it, does it affect our ability to basically keep the system solvent? And if it doesn't, then I don't understand why we can't at least visit the rate, like, I'm not tied to a five percent particularly, but that's kind of how I look at it, right? Solvent, yes, no, if it is, what's your, what's your excess?
Right, so with anything with the budget, we can always shuffle stuff around and cover something on a temporary basis. So, you know, we could do a lot of things for the short term. You know, I would suggest that the current rates, considering this is an enterprise system, so it's supposed to be, you know, basically, the operation is supposed to be paying for itself through the user rates. So we need to have a surplus at the end of each year for beyond the day-to-day operations, so when something breaks or ages, we can repair it. I did throw together some figures, so over the last five years, the utility fund has come up with a surplus of seven point five, seven six million dollars over five years. There are eleven point eight million dollars worth of projects just for water and sewer projected for the next five years. So I would suggest that our existing user rates are not adequate to cover the long-term maintenance of the system. Now, this is also after we just received six point seven million dollars from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan Act, and of that, we put all of it to infrastructure, and four point six, seven four million of that that fell out of the sky was used to fund deferred maintenance on the system. So we were gifted four and a half million dollars that went into the system to catch up on deferred maintenance, and we have had seven point five million dollars surplus over five years to pay for eleven point eight million dollars worth of projects. So I would suggest that the existing rates are not enough to sustain the system long-term. So, again, you can do something on a short-term basis, but long-term.
What's the projected useful life of this eleven million dollar project you brought up a couple of times? Like, if this useful life is twenty years, right, like, you're only, you're only looking at five years of seven million dollars, right?
Right, and this is, this is just the five-year window of, we typically do a six-year capital improvement program, and we don't have anything planned at this point for that sixth year because we don't anticipate having the funds to really do anything with it. So some of the projects are, I don't have the specific projects in front of me, and we will share with you a draft capital improvement program at, hopefully, next week's meeting to help you get up to speed on what some of the system needs are. And those figures, by the way, do not include a facility for the Public Works Department, that's just water and sewer infrastructure.
For me, do you have cash flow projections on this?
Is concerning, I'm sorry?
Do you have cash flow projections on this, like, I mean, ultimately, we're talking about, like, a net present value calculation, I know we talked about that a couple of weeks ago, right? So like, is this something that is done and available on this, or, because like, if, otherwise, this is kind of a vibes conversation, right? Like, if we don't have numbers, I, I'm very sympathetic to where you're coming from as kind of a numbers guy too, right? But it's hard to have these conversations without seeing actual numbers.
Sure, sure.
And Jim, just to check, the five percent reduction, what, that comes out to a hundred and, was it, is that what it came out to? I thought it was a hundred and like sixty-nine or something like that. But either way, you know, that's a hundred and sixty-nine of what, seven million put back over five years, times five, so. Again, I, I mean, it's still a large number, but a five percent relief for residents who are definitely already in a tough time right now, especially with everything going on. And again, the other proposal in this is a one-year, basically a one-year readdress at a workshop that is dedicated to water, where, again, we're gonna look at all the data and everything like that, but a temporary reprieve of at least five percent while we're doing that and we get that back, you know, over the course of a year, that'll give staff time to prepare, that'll give staff the time to get everything together, but, you know, I don't see a break in the bank here, and that's why I included it in the budget plan.
The point, the point I'm making is if the rates were adequate to sustain the maintenance of the system, we would not have had four million dollars worth of projects to catch up on. If we had the money to fix things and replace things as we needed to, we would do it. So, that's, that's my point. Can we float it for a year? Probably, but it's just gonna put us that much farther behind, you know, in the big picture, I guess.
And with the other question, is that agenda is, you know, how difficult it is, it would be to go back and raise rates later on if we need to? If we cut the rates for a year and find out that, oh, we've got this other project that we didn't realize we really, really, really need to do, you know, now we have to go back and ask to raise the rates again. You know, I.
If you think people are unhappy now.
If we're drawing money out of the utility fund balance now, you know, two and a half million dollars on these projects that we're catching up on, and we're, you know, we're only putting a million and a half annually as an average back in. and we're, you know, we're only putting a million and a half annually as an average back in, right? We're already losing ground. We're already, we're already in a place where we are a million dollars back from where we were this, you know, the past year by just in the, in the budget that we've written now, even if we didn't change the utility rates. So while I'm not indifferent to the, to the calls to, you know, lower our water and sewer rates, I'm cautionary about it because we have an aging system to maintain and replace.
My only problem with this is again, we're talking 100 and maybe $69,000. And again, that's, that's a 5% cut. Realistically, we could, we could have gone higher for a trial run. But if the idea is, you know, this 5% is what's really gonna make or break the bank, and it's gonna be hard to raise it back if we really need to, you know, what it sounds to me like then is the next suggestion would be to raise rates, but obviously, we're not gonna do that when people are hurting right now. Again, my recommendation from the mayor's office to council would be a 5% reduction currently. And I don't believe it's unsustainable. Again, we'll readdress it in a year if we really need to. And again, there's provisions for that in here. And that's, that's coming from both a place of sympathy for our residents who are obviously struggling with the water bills currently. And that's coming from a place of knowing that, you know, this is not gonna break our piggy bank. You know, it's $169,000. And like you said, you know, I'll be, I'll be the one who takes the brunt of it if we do have to raise it.
Well, again, it's not, it's not that it's gonna bankrupt us in a year or anything. I'm, I'm not trying to raise that alarm. I'm just saying that structurally, over the long haul, the rates are not keeping up with the maintenance of the system. They're keeping up with the day-to-day and things like that, but then when we have to replace, you know, I'll use Westview Drive as an example. We're in the midst of a water line replacement there. That line has, has water leaks almost annually, usually in the winter. And we lose, you know, tens of thousands of gallons of finished water each time and have to go out and make a repair. So the line needs to be replaced. Those, those sort of projects have been funded at times from benefit assessment funds. Either we've borrowed money or we've used benefit assessment funds, which are the funds the developers pay to reimburse the city for the development of the water and sewer capacity. A lot of those projects aren't really capacity building projects, though. They're maintenance projects. So the money that we collect for benefit assessments or impact fees really should be paying back the city's expense to develop that capacity, not really operation and maintenance. But we tend to use it, and the argument can be, well, we're reducing leaks, and with reducing leaks or reducing inflow and infiltration on the wastewater side, we're creating additional capacity. So we can argue it a way, one way or the other. But again, just structurally, you know, if you earn just enough money to pay your bills and put food on the table, and then your car breaks down, where does that money for the car repair come from? That's my concern with, with, you know, with saying, okay, we're gonna reduce our, we can't really afford to fix everything we need to now, but we're gonna take in less revenue. I just think structurally, it's, it's.
The, I've, I've, I've got a real quick question. You said over the past five years, you put, we put away 7.6 million-ish.
Roughly, yep.
What, what of that do we currently have on hand?
It's, it's all in reserve. It's all in fund balance.
Okay. What haven't we done that to? If, if we've got that much in reserve right now, to me, over the next five years, it would seem that we're going to pull in probably, if we just use the same number, 7.6 mil. Now we've got 15-ish million for the $11 million worth of projects.
Our expenses in operating the system have increased. Last year, for example, we went from FY '23 was 1.458 million, last year was 915,000. So we did see a drop last year. We're seeing increased costs in chemicals. We know that our, our electricity contract expires in December, and we anticipate paying a higher rate for electricity, and the wastewater treatment plant is a huge consumer of electricity. Not to mention, even if we do receive the grant funding to address the PFAS and PFOA filtration that we need on a couple of our wells, there's going to be an increased expense with changing that filter media out probably every year to 18 months. It's been, and I was, attended a presentation just last week in Hempstead where they're a bit ahead of us because they were hit harder and MDE kind of came down on them when, when their numbers came in for, for PFAS. So they're farther along than most municipalities are, but they're anticipating, they've in testing, realized that the PFOA substances break through the carbon filtration more quickly than PFAS does. So those filters will need to be changed probably annually to 18 months. And they're looking at, you know, six figures plus to change out the carbon every year to 18 months. So that's a factor that we need to be aware of also, is that that's going to be an additional cost. Even, even if the filtration is paid for by a grant, it's still going to cost more to operate it. So we don't know exactly what that's going to be yet. That's.
But, but we still, we still come in, we're still coming in like four million to the positive by the time it's all said and done.
I don't think the seven and a half million is like excess, right? Like, or profit or whatever. I think that's just revenue, right? Like, you're not, are you saying you're adding seven million to the cost?
That is the surplus. That is the surplus.
Yeah, that's in the account.
That's, that's the money we have to tackle these capital projects.
Got it.
And again, as we get to the filtration, everything like that, you know, that's why, you know, there's a resolution in here, for instance, that brings us back to a yearly water workshop, because that's where you guys would make that case of obviously, this is going up, these expenses are going up. You know, right now, I just don't see, I don't see the justification for not doing 5%. And that's kind of my, I mean, that's my problem at least. I get that, you know, we have the additional expenses, but again, to Harry's point, projected out over the five, I mean, numbers are adding up in that regard. But like you said, there is, there is other projects coming up, like the filtration for the PFAS, PFOA. But we don't have that yet. When we have those estimates, bring it up to the water workshop that we have for the year, and let's address it then. But there's no, again, this is just from the mayor's office. I don't believe there's no reason we can't give reprieve in the current moment.
We'll, we'll share the capital improvement program. We'll have it updated in time for next week's meeting and share that. So if there's any, you know, that'll provide a lot of the more detailed numbers, and certainly we can, you know, pass on the utility surpluses for the last five years, so everybody has the numbers that I'm looking at.
One other thing, Jim, is that, you know, that the positive amounts that have gone to the fund balance in the last five years have been due to the benefit assessments from all of the new housing that's been built over in Meadowbrook and Meads Crossing. Because our total, you know, ratepayer intake is only about $3 million. So an average of a million and a half a year as, as being put into the fund didn't come out of those ratepayers. It came from the benefit assessments. And perhaps the thing to do going forward is to relook at what that benefit assessment is for new developments. You know, and, you know, maybe we can cut a little slack to the residents and, but then look at how to fund that future going forward with, through the, through the benefit assessment as opposed to doing it through the ratepayer.
And again, that makes sure the ratepayers and subsidizing housing to begin with.
Exactly.
I mean, that's what it really comes down to.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're clearly not because the funds don't get to that, you know, the, the amount that's paid by ratepayers doesn't get anywhere near that amount, so. But it's just, yeah, so think about that going forward.
We'll get some detailed figures for you for consideration. So I just wanted to put it on your radar screen tonight. So not really expecting, and of course, we have to have a public hearing on the budget and everything like that next month, so I just wanted you guys to be aware of the concern and the, the longer-term outlook.
Appreciate it.
Okay, well, additional comments, questions, concerns by council? If not, or if not, I guess I'm going to vote. Do we have additional comments, questions, concerns? Going to vote on introducing the ordinance 06-2025 fiscal year 2025-2026 operating budget. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Carrie's up next. Ordinance 07-2025 fiscal year 2025-2026 water and sewer rates.
Motion to introduce?
Yep, that's what I'm gonna be looking for. Motion to introduce. Looking for a, and Jim, does this have the 5% on the reduction?
That does not. We did that ordinance before Thursday when you advised us which, which utility budget to use. So we'll adjust that for.
Adjust, adjust for the 5% because that's what we have budgeted currently. Other than that, we got a motion for introduction. Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Carrie's. Up next, we have the 2025-2026 tax rate. We're gonna be asking this for emergency adoption. There's always the option of not introducing it and then adopting it at the May 20, 21st meeting. However, this will allow us to get that tax rate over to the county. That tax rate, as far as I'm aware, nothing has changed from the previous year. So looking for a motion of introduction on that.
Motion to introduce?
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
Do we have to?
Yeah, do we introduce it first and then emergency, right? Jim?
We can, we can do it.
We can do it either way if I remember correctly.
My question is, do we need to?
You'll need to vote to declare it an emergency to pass it to.
And also, constant yield, do we have to announce that? Okay.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, proceeding forward. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name?
Aye.
Next up, I'll be looking for the, a motion to adopt it as an emergency.
This is just, the reason for the emergency is just to get it over to the county?
Yep, because they have a expedited like filing. Again, we can wait till the 21st if real need be, but this just helps us being compliant faster essentially. And again, nothing has changed, so.
Well, I mean, the 31st wouldn't be 30, or the 21st rather, wouldn't be 30 days anyway, so.
We only have to wait six days. On ordinance, it's six days.
Okay, I thought it was three.
We usually go with.
No, we normally wait till the next meeting, but technically, you only need to wait six days on ordinance.
That's why I'm.
Looking for a motion to adopt it as emergency?
So moved.
Looking for a second?
A second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Carrie's. Up next, we have, up for introduction, ordinance 09-2025 police manual.
You, you guys voted to declare it an emergency?
Yes.
Didn't vote to actually pass it under emergency.
We need to vote to approve it.
Oh, to approve it afterwards? Oh, we, we voted.
Never mind, never mind, okay, I remember now. Okay, looking for a motion to approve the fiscal, the ordinance 08-2025 fiscal year 2025-2026 tax rate for emergency adoption. Looking for a motion of approval.
Move to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
I don't know which one you guys, one of you guys did.
I've got Chris and Harry.
All those, or additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Carrie's. We got that off the plate. Up next, we have ordinance 09-2025 police manual. Basically, what this ordinance is doing is allowing the police chief to adopt the police manual, make changes to it. We use a system called Lexipol, which essentially keeps it up to date to begin with. And it is, also makes it available for viewing by the mayor, city manager, or council, or why am I, why are my ordinances out of whack here? Thank you. Again, we have Lexipol here. That was a, that's a subscription that we subscribe to. It basically keeps our police manual up to date. This ordinance is giving the police chief the ability to adopt the police manual. If anybody's familiar with the police manual, it's been on the back burner of council's radar for probably, what, a couple of years now since the last adoption, and we just have policy basically.
Probably a good year since it, or close to a year since it's been done.
So I am looking for a motion in regards to this.
Motion to introduce?
For a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none?
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure why, but the language strikes me a little bit, I'm, I'm not.
Part of the language?
Well, just the sole authority, the, the chief has sole authority, and I'm wondering if, you know, if that's. We just remove the word sole and just the, the chief of police shall have the authority to adopt.
That's fine. I'm good with removing sole.
Yeah, that doesn't.
Yeah, I just, I, that just, you know.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
When you get singular like that, I, you know, you know, I, I, but we need to move this off the, off the square.
I mean, is everybody consent on that? We'll go ahead and get the sole removed from that. Sounds good. Was that your only concern on it?
Yeah, that was, that was really the, that was really the concern.
Roger that. Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Carrie's. Okay, up next, we have ordinance 10-2025 city attorney requirements. Basically, this is changing it to where the city attorney may be requested instead of required to attend all meetings by the mayor, city manager, or city council. In addition to this, it is make it to where our contracts, agreements, ordinances, bonds, leases, and other legal documents can be specifically requested to be reviewed by the mayor, city manager, or city council. However, that doesn't automatically apply. That goes over to special meetings as well. It's basically just saying, instead of this is a shout that the city, that the city attorney has to do all this, this is more of a request. And the city council, if the city council wants him, let's say we get to the workshop, right, and you guys, well, we want to see him at the Monday meeting so he can make sure that everything's legally good. The city council can request that, instead of him being obligated to sit here through a meeting and us pay him essentially for doing that. The next thing would be, again, those contracts, the agreements and stuff like that. There's stuff that we do here that we, we're essentially just handing over a bill for what is, what is essentially a signature. And that's my take on it. I'm looking for a motion in regards to it.
Motion to introduce?
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
The, the only, the main concern that I have is that in regards to the city attorney attending the meetings of the planning commission, that the planning commission should have a voice into whether or not they request the city attorney to be present.
I would, I, I mean, I'd give that over to the city manager still, as kind of the director of, I mean, the director of operations here. I mean, there's undoubtedly times where the planning and zoning commission doesn't necessarily need an attorney there, I'd say. I mean, I've looked through a couple of them where they don't. I'd refer to Jim. I mean, I'm fine either way.
I think that, you know, certainly the city manager, you know, can take that under advisement if the planning commission, you know, is uncomfortable about a particular item or a process or something like that. You know, I think, I think the city manager, you know, whoever's sitting at the seat years from now or whatever, would certainly, you know, it gives them the discretion to direct the city attorney to attend, so.
That's, again.
They have a mechanism, right? Like, they can, there's gonna be a council liaison, right? Like, you can, they can talk to the council liaison and be like, hey, I want this thing, or they can even, like, they can even email you and say, hey, I, I'm not comfortable legally with whatever the thing is, and say their piece. Like, it's not like they don't have a, a mechanism for, for having the attorney there, right?
And that's what I think this still gives everybody that mechanism.
I mean, they, they receive their packets ahead of time, so they review them. They have any questions if they need for the attorney, then they could go to Jim or the liaison and request that the attorney attend. I don't think it's like jumping through hoops or anything. Plenty of people to reach out to, to be able to have the attorney.
I'm fine. I just, that's, you know, I'm just bringing that, bringing that up. I don't think, like you say, I don't think that that's a huge issue one way or the other. The other, the other question that I have is, and this, this goes back to all of the discussions from, you know, a year and a half ago and. A year and a half ago and, and even before then. Uh, and this applies not only to the city attorney, but also to several other of the officer positions. We don't have anything in here regarding removal.
It's in a different one. It's in a different one of these ordinances that are on the board for tonight. It classifies them as agents, agents of the city and agencies of the city.
Well, I, and I read that and I'm not real, I, I did not have a chance to really review that one in depth. And I'm not real. Keen on the wording in that. I need to look into that further and match that up with, with current code.
I mean, I think you'd be hard pressed to not say an officer of the city acting on behalf of the city isn't an agent of the city. I mean, that's basically where the correlation comes down the line of it all. Realistically, I still stand by the commitment that the mayor had the authority to fire the city attorney. And this is basically just re-clarifying that because, again, if anybody's gonna sit here and make the argument that an officer of the city who is representing the city isn't an agent of the city in representation matters. My opinion, that's a far stretch. And the mayor does still have discretion over agents and agencies of the city. And again, this is a. This is in a different ordinance, but that basically just goes into clarifying what that means, that officers listed within, yada, 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 but we'll get to that when we discuss it.
We discussed that when we get to that ordinance, though.
Yeah, I, that's, that's fine.
That's holding up this one, so like, I'd like to get this one done and move forward, please.
Questions come, additional questions, comments, concerns by council?
No, sir.
And again, this is for introduction.
Yep, for introduction. Without hearing any additional comments, questions, concerns, um, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carries forward. Next up, we have. Next up, we have ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty-five, executive administrative assistant. This is something that's been talked about at the city for a good while now. Basically, this is creating a second who is also a jack of all trades, you know, should we lose an economic development director? Should we lose a planning and zoning director, anything like that? We have somebody who can fill those spots where all that responsibility isn't put on our city manager. I know, you know, Jim being the. The working guy that he is, he'll tell you he can handle it all, but, and this is no offense to Jim, but it is a lot of workload for one individual. There has to be a succession plan for here in the city if something should happen. And this is basically a role that could fill that to where they could temporarily fill the role while we find an actual temporary or permanent nomination for the position. But again, it's somebody who's going to coordinate tasks that don't necessarily need to be held up by our city manager on the day-to-day, because there is many tasks out there. That Jim does take on, that he shouldn't, not, not to say shouldn't be taken on, but it can be delegated to somebody in a position like this. One thing I've talked about with the city managers, and when we, when we do go to place this position out, should it be approved? One of the key requirements we're gonna be looking for is grant writing process, because we also wanted to kind of fill that initial role. So, without further, uh, talking on it, I'm looking for a motion in regards to it.
Motion to introduce.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
My only question on this is, um. About the, the chief of police being included in this and.
I forgot to mention that, that's my bad. Um, so in the, there is a revised version that we have where the chief of police has been taken out. So that is, again, that is my bad, because we didn't get it in the packets in time. There's a couple of these where we had additional corrections, they just didn't make it to the packets. So I'm gonna, Jim, if you can, remind me when we get to them, just so we mention it before.
Yeah, so we're only voting on introduction at this point, so.
Yeah, just introduction. And that's, that's where we're gonna make the corrections between introduction and approval. Sorry, I, I. That was, that was my bad on that one.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Carries. Next up, we have the amendment to the sign code. Ordinance twelve dash twenty twenty-five amendment to sign code. Basically, what this is allowing is for community-based signs. It has a few different requirements and seasons to make sure the signs are coming up and down. Again, it also has an approval process and then a max amount that you're allowed. It also requires that if you're gonna be placing them on city, you know, city property, you need to get permission for the appropriate department of where you're placing them. Looking for a motion in regards to it.
Motion to introduce.
Second?
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns?
Still think there's a typo.
There is a typo.
It's still the six, ten.
The ten, the ten.
My bad.
I think I.
Yeah, we, we know, again, there's some of the stuff that we know about it, it just will be corrected between the current and post, but it is, it's meant to be ten. In the current additional list.
What's meant to be ten?
Unless, unless somebody wants to go down to six. It's. Uh, is everybody good with ten, or does everybody want six in particular?
I'm fine with ten.
Again, this is mainly just to allow community-based organizations to have signs. Currently, I don't, Jim, just correct me if I'm wrong, but nobody's supposed to have signs, right? Are sports organizations, are they allowed to have signs currently?
So the current code, which I know, Mary, you and I have talked about, um, you know, I have some concerns with our current code based on case law that's occurred since that was adopted. But, yeah, uh, we call them, uh, community associations that are, you know, organizations not, not-for-profit that, um, are allowed to do off-premise advertising. That was really the, um, the driver behind it was generally the sign code restricts signage to the property where the activity is occurring and not on other properties. So this community association section was. Created to allow sports organizations, civic groups, things like that to advertise the, you know, whatever it might be, the sign-ups for soccer, Little League, the pancake breakfast for the, you know, or the, the, you know. Carnival or something like that for the firemen. So there, there has been some case law since then that has put some ordinance of like that to the test, so. This is one that I think I would like to get a legal review on before we actually pass it.
And I, I a hundred percent agree in that regard. I mean, regardless, everything introduced and approved right now has to have legal surety, but we do, again. Should it be introduced and whatnot, um, let's make sure we get it by J, just to make sure it's.
And the, I will comment that the size is pretty substantial compared to your average, like, lawn sign.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a, a real concern to me. I think that we need to, to have, um.
Thirty-two square feet, for example, is bigger than what we allow for commercial signs in the, um.
Yeah, I mean, we shouldn't be, especially, you know, like in the downtown, uh, district where we do restrict the size of signs, it shouldn't be any larger than sign, than signs that are otherwise permitted, uh, in those districts.
What if we went to a dimension or a total of all the signs can't exceed whatever the dimension of eight by four?
That, that, that would, um, open up to people doing. A bunch of little tiny signs and one giant one, you know?
Although the, the counterpoint to that is, I know. Back in the day, um, we had, uh, when we would put up, say, drama signs for the high school or something like that, it was a sheet of plywood and a sheet of plywood in an A. And that's, that, so that would, that would have been eight by four at that point.
Right, but I'm, I, I, I think that that, while that would be okay, you know, um, like at the circle where everybody puts the, um, you know, uh, political signs, the larger political signs. I don't think that that would be, um, appropriate in a neighborhood. And it certainly wouldn't be appropriate in the historic downtown district. So I think that we need to rein that in in some manner so that it, it has to conform to sizes per other areas of the code.
I think it should all be zoned, is kind of what you're saying, right?
So that it conforms with the.
This area in this neighborhood should only be A big, this area can be bigger, this, that's, is that what you're getting at?
I think the, the current code allows for signs to be of a certain size in various zoning districts anyway. Uh, and that we ought to, that we ought to, this ought to coordinate with that.
I'd say maximum size dimensions based on square footage of whatever eight by four would be. Or I mean, even take it down to six by two, but if someone wants to do one large sign. Compared to a bunch of little signs, but when they actually fill out the application for ten signs up to the square footage dimensions of six by two or eight by four. That's still, that gives them that, um. Flexibility of what kind of sign they'd like. Um, again, if it, in my opinion. One big sign covers what some people are looking for, a bunch of little signs cover what people are looking for, but if you, I mean, if you regulate it down to the square footage dimension total of what that, that's what you're allowed to have between those ten signs that you'd be regulated on that permit anyways. I think that, uh, confines people as to what those ten signs can be. And if we put them to, I don't know, whatever size would be reasonable for people. Quite a bit of signs still regardless, but if you.
Smaller the sign is, the harder it is to read too, right? So like, if I'm, if I'm trying to get people to sign up for my soccer club.
And again, that's why I say, you know, maybe you change it from maximum size dimension shall not exceed, you know, the A by four, instead change that to the square footage of A by four. Signs that they're getting in the permit anyways to match up to that maximum. So if they want to do ten little signs, they're free to. If they want to do one big sign on the side of a building, they're free to.
Yeah, because, I mean, that just equates to like a banner. It's not even really.
That gives them the choice of how they want to advertise.
I, I'm, I'm sorry, I still think we need to, to match this up with the zoning. What's allowed within the zoning. Write in something about, you know, your typical, like, real estate yard side, size sign. I don't know that that's legislated in. I gotta, I'd have to go back and read the zoning, um, regs. But I think that, you know, the way this is written, somebody could put a four, eight by four sign in their yard somewhere in Meadowbrook. And I can just imagine what would follow that.
Well, in theory, I mean, I don't know what the age of ways.
There's also a sunset provision in here too, right? So like, they, they can only have it in for, for X amount of time and then it has to come down, so like, if I'm, again, to use the soccer club.
And then they get a permit to put it back up again, I'm, you know.
If, I mean, if it's being abused, you revisit it.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, why, why create the, the, um.
I mean, I'm gonna.
The possibility of that kind of abuse, I'm, I'm just.
Unless you make this ordinance five pages long, there's always gonna be a loophole that somebody can figure out to use to put a sign up.
That's still, that's not an excuse to.
It isn't, but I'm just saying, if, if it is, if it is being abused, we have a permit process. Again, change the dimension to eight by four in square footage required for the ten signs, that, that gives them flexibility for a large sign or a bunch of smaller signs. Or again, maybe drop it down to six by two. But I think your problem is gonna be, no, no offense to the small yard signs, I don't honestly know how effective they are, to be truthful with you. They've also been doing larger signs for many years. I know people have been using larger signs here in Tawnytown for many years that can't because we've done stricter enforcement on it. But this is, again, I, I think this is being overthought a little bit. Just make the maximum size dimension to the square footage of, again, maybe even six by two. I think that really limits you in what you can do with your ten signs, no matter what, you still get the ten signs everybody else can do, but you have to do within the square footage. Or again, eight by four. But if you're going to limit each sign to a little yard sign. I mean, you know, and the next thing I do is I take a lot of those little yards.
Right, I mean, you're only, but you're, you're only limiting that in, like, the residential zones where you don't want to have a big sign put up.
I mean, I'd be fine with adding a specification that the eight by four. Can't be. Again, I, I still think the square footage is the easiest way to limit it, but that's just me.
In addition to the size questions, um. One of the primary tenants of the existing sign code, um, you know, limits signs to the premise where the activity or business is occurring. I think that by defining community-based organization as. A. A business physically located within the corporate limits of the city of Tawnytown, that opens the door to any business advertising anywhere in the city.
Yeah.
And that, and. From, from the way the city has regulated signs in the past, that's a huge departure. And it doesn't seem. That, you know, the idea of the oversight of aesthetics and safety is really being met by kind of opening the floodgates on off-premise advertising. Now, again, you know, it, it certainly is council's purview to, to open those floodgates. But it is a big departure from our current. Sign program. And I do just want to point out also, because this is a zoning ordinance, there's a little extra step involved here, so it needs to go before the planning commission for them to have the opportunity to comment. Before we have a public hearing on it, so, um, a little extra step in there because it is a zoning ordinance.
Well, again, my suggestion, sign dimensions, bring it down to a square footage and then kick it back to planning and zoning and see what they recommend. Better figure, better idea for it.
My, my, my only, uh, objection to that is square footage is gonna be really hard to regulate. So that's, that's where I, I would actually prefer dimensional callouts, because. Like I said, you, otherwise you're gonna have whoever's doing the, uh, the enforcement going around and doing math to figure out what the, uh, what the signs are. And what they all add up to.
We should be able to catch that at the application point.
Yeah, the application process in here is where you're gonna catch that.
I, I still think you're opening a can of worms to allow a sheet of plywood-sized sign in a residential neighborhood. I think you're just asking for trouble. Asking for trouble.
I mean, there's always the idea of just kicking it back to planning and zoning and see what they say, and they might have a recommendation that makes it work better.
I mean, I'm not opposing, you know me, I'm not opposed to changing the sign ordinances, because I think our sign ordinances are outdated, but let's be smart about this.
Sure.
And, and, and I just don't think that this, um, I don't think that this particular ordinance is ready to move forward.
Jim, is it after introduction it goes to planning and zoning?
Yeah, I mean, it can certainly be introduced tonight and it can be massaged, you know, however it needs to be, you know, over the course of the.
Well, so let's strike this from.
But you wouldn't be able to, you wouldn't be able to pass it on the twenty-first.
I mean, we're not, we're not gonna pass on the twenty-first. I mean, let's introduce, kick it back to planning and zoning. Get comments, come back, comment again from their, from planning and zoning's comment, and again, craft the legislation as needed. I still advocate fully that there needs to be some kind of ordinance there for this.
Well, I don't disagree, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you on this destiny.
I'm fine.
I'm just, we're just hammering out the details.
I'm fine however this changes. I think, you know, let's, let's kick it back to planning and zoning and see what they come back with and then let's do additional input at our own workshop essentially.
And then, the other, the other thing is about permits fees, um. You know, you're charging, uh, you know, essentially a quarterly permit fee for signs for nonprofits. I, I think that that's.
But I actually brought up something similar when, when, when I, uh, I, I read this, because like, I, I was concerned that, like, depending if. A lot of nonprofits are really small, right? So like, they don't necessarily have the.
They don't have money, right.
Exactly, like, like you're, you're working with hundreds of dollars tops and that's like for your whole freaking year. So like, I, I, I even suggested, like, a potentially, like, depending on the size of your organ, or, or your, your status as a C-three or whatever. Having some kind of like a progressive fee structure too, because like, I don't want, I don't want small nonprofits to get priced out and not be able to, to do signs also.
And I'm, I'm cool with that as well. My only question would be, Jim, can we make sure we get legal on whether that is allowed?
Yeah, whether, yeah.
That's my, that's my.
Maybe we have to charge everybody or charge nobody, so.
And that's, that's my, that's my only issue, is I, I think you might, from my understanding of it, it's either you charge everybody or you don't charge anybody. But regardless, let's get legal on that. Again, let's, let's come back to this. I'd say introduce it so it can still be molded and moved, um, but it's not gonna adopt.
I would prefer some recrafting before we even introduce this. This one, to me, is a little bit too much work needs to be done, in my opinion.
Well, I think the, the introduction is just the intent to do this. Realistically, you can craft it more than however you want after it.
Yeah, because, I mean, I would like to hear what planning and zoning has to say about it, for sure, because.
And, and we could bring it up to planning and zoning without having to introduce the ordinance, we can, we can. You know, it can be brought up to, to planning and zoning right off the bat.
Jim, how many days do we have after introducing? Is it forty-five? It might be, it's seventy days actually, it's seventy days after introduction. So you have seventy days after introduction to, before it dies. So I mean, I think in seventy days, there's no reason we can't get enough comment and stuff to mold this. I'm still in favor of introduction, but it's up to council.
I wanna try and make sure some of our civic organizations have the ability to talk about, you know, what they're doing, I mean.
And let's put it.
On the campaign, a lot of people were asking, like, what do we have for the youth, and, and it's like, well, we, there's a lot of stuff with, through Parks and Rec, there's lots of things going on, but they can't advertise outside of like Facebook, right?
That'd be my next thing. Parks and Rec, get common opinion on that. Again, let's try to get common opinion from Parks and Rec, from planning and zoning, come back to this, not at the May twenty-first, but at the June workshop. And then if we need, we'll make it a point of emphasis at the June workshop to make this a full-on discussion. Final, again, I'm, I'm still in favor of introduction because. Final, again, I'm, I'm still in favor of introduction because it shows the intent to do. Anything in here can be changed from introduction to.
And if it dies, we can reintroduce, right? Like if we still need, if we still need to do more work, but like, I don't know, I, I want to make sure that this stays on, on radar because like I think it's important for, for our civics to, to at least see the appearance that, that we're doing something, right? Like, like we're trying to help you guys out in, in, in ways that we can that make sense.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Carries. Up next, we have establishment of information technology officer and agency designation for officers. So this is the one that we were talking about earlier that has the agency designation at the end of it. This is basically just added into that section so basically anybody who's appointed officer, which is basically everybody listed in that section, does have somebody who is the removal authority, which again, my argument would be if you are somebody representing the city, if you're an officer of the city, you are by correlation a agent of the city and thus an agency of the city as well. The all this, the main purpose of this article though, is basically establishing the IT department as a supplemental office. You know, there's been some back and forth of what IT is here in Tawnytown. It is my belief from the mayor's office that IT is a supplemental department. This still allows for the creation of the IT manual. However, it does give the department heads more tailoring of their specific IT policies. And I think that goes to include social media policy as well. And again, it says, you know, each policy shall be managed operationally by the applicable department head or executive with guidance and technical input from the IT office. So they still have guidance and input, but this is still allowing those department heads to really steer their departments. And again, it is making the head of IT an officer of the city, which is something that should have happened a long time ago if they are serving as a department head capacity or.
Yeah, but this doesn't make any, this wouldn't make, it doesn't create an IT department. It creates it as an agency.
It creates, it creates IT staff. And what I would say is what it creates is the head of that agency, which is our IT. It creates a head of that agency. I don't know if IT needs to be a department. I don't know if IT really is a department type role, especially in a city as small as ours. I believe they serve more in, in officer capacity with the ability to have additional employees to serve that agency, to serve that goal, to serve that mission.
The, the idea of a department would be a little bit more consistent with how other functional areas are set up in the city. So I'll use the finance department as an example, that, you know, they support all departments. So they interact with every other department and in a way, you know, a lot of ways IT is similar that, you know, it touches all departments, just like, just like paying the bills does. You know, I mean, not. This is another one that I would think the interpretation of agency, I'm not really clear about.
Yeah, that's where I'm kind of foggy is about agency and interpretation of agency. And if that's defined clearly in code and charter.
Well, it isn't.
This would, this would define it.
That's why it's clarifying what it is.
Okay, um, yeah, so.
This is basically the definition of what agency is. Because currently it does specify agents and agency of the city under the mayor's purview for appointees and whatnot. But again, just using what I would consider common sense, if you are a representative and you're an officer of the city and you are representing the city, are you not then by definition an agent of the city? Are you an agent of the, the city of Tawnytown when you go to represent them in a legal case?
And I, yeah, I, I certainly think that some definitions are in order because we use the, you know, we throw around the term agent in, in correspondence, in agreements that, you know, we may say the city or its agent. And in that, you know, case, we may be referring to a contractor or, you know, a surveyor or whomever we've engaged to do a job for the city. We may refer to them as our agent, that, you know, our agent has the right to go on the property in this easement or whatever, what have you.
Well, for us, I mean.
And yet we don't define it. So I, I think there definitely needs to be some, some clarification to it.
I, in my mind, there's no doubt that agent is referring to the officers of the city. I mean, it would be like, and when you're talking about legal, our, legal is an agent of the city.
And right, that, that's just contrary to.
I know.
You know, previous opinions from attorneys, so.
Yeah, and, you know, I mean, like you say, it may be clear in, in your mind, but that doesn't make it clear in legal language.
Well, in legal lan- language, it actually says for agents and agencies, a representative of the city.
You know, there are enough inconsistencies in code and charter already. I don't want to be introducing another one. So I would like, I'd like to see this studied more again before we move this forward.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask for a motion in regards to introduction.
Motion to introduce.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Looking for additional comments, questions, concerns by council? And Jim, refer to Jay as far as the definition of agent and agency, but when I went through a legal definition of it, if I'm recalling correctly, it was a representative of the city, which any officer is going to be a representative of the city. Unless someone has a different.
But then you need to, you need to have a clear definition of who the officers are.
Well, that's why that whole chapter is officers and employees and then it also says it does define.
I, I'd like to read this in context with the greater ordinance before I say anymore about it, because it, right now, it's too far out of context for me to be able to really grasp it.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Carries. Up next, we have temporary administrative suspension. Basically, this is going over the ability of the administration and the mayor to basically suspend the enforcement of an ordinance for up to sixty days. When it is suspended, it automatically goes on to the council's agenda and then also requires a written notice to the city manager and city council of why the ordinance was suspended. In addition to that, it also a proposed correction or clarifying of what might make this more enforceable. The issue with this is we have a bunch of ordinances here in the city of Tawnytown that realistically, we don't have the enforceability for. This would allow to kick it back to legislators, put it on their agenda automatically and again, not have the city staff questioning, how do we enforce an ordinance that is not enforceable? So this is basically a mechanism to kick things back to legislative from the administrative. And I'm looking for a motion in regards to that.
Do motion to introduce.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
This is a bad idea. This is just a bad idea.
Why?
Why?
You, you, you have, this ordinance gives the mayor power to, to do anything he wants, suspend whatever he wants, do anything he wants. And without, without any kind of check or balance. This is bad.
The check is council.
The check is council.
Yeah, but, but, but. The check is council, but then, you know, the council isn't going to meet, you know.
Not only that, it has, it has an automatic sunset on it of sixty days and then it can't.
Sixty days, how much can you do in sixty days? You know, I, I'm, no, this is.
From an ordinance though?
This is bad, this is a bad idea.
Authority is in charter, there shouldn't be any authority in ordinance. Basically, this is just allowing to kick back ordinances that are.
No, this is bad.
Impractical.
Bad and questionable in terms of legal sufficiency.
I don't understand the questionability of it, just because it automatically, it automatically has the check and balance built into it.
You, you, you have, really, you guys have really strong opinions about this, I don't understand.
Well, technically enforcement falls to the administration actually. And the, no, council is not the enforcers of code. It's actually.
They establish the ordinances.
Yes, you said, and that's the.
And, and management is to carry them out.
But we, there's, there's ordinances.
If they're having trouble doing that and, and something's not, they, enforceable in some way, or, or there's, there's questions about it, like it's, it's, it's on us to, to clarify it or to fix it, right? Like that's, 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 that's my reading of the intent of this is to, like there's, there's stupid stuff in, in code and charter that's not being, like it's unclear or it's poorly written, whatever, whatever the case may be, like our job is to try and fix.
And I've said that for two years, that there's a lot of junk in our code and charter that needs to come out.
We're talking about it.
But I'm, I'm not.
And technically, you guys could call an emergency meeting if it was something substantial and literally do away, do away with the repeal right then and there. You have, council has the authority to do away with it even through this. The only thing this does is basically suspend enforcement on the administrative level, which I can already do from the mayor's seat if you understand enforcement administrative policy.
Then why do you need this ordinance?
What this does is it kicks it back to the council saying this needs to be clarified. So I'm not just saying to the city manager, hey, we're, we, we're just not going to enforce this.
This is too much of a carte blanche.
To, to me, this is just. To, to me, this is a, a, a safety check, right? Like if something's wrong, it needs to be fixed, it goes on our radar immediately. We, we, we have two, three months to fix it, like that. Otherwise, things just keep getting kicked down the, that can keeps getting kicked down the road. And like you just said, like you've been talking about things that are silly for two years and it never gets done, right? Like this is, this is how we can get things done.
Then, I'm, I'm, I'm much more interested in having council do their job in terms of doing that.
That's what this does.
But that's not what this does. Well, it is what this does in the end of it, but it, it, it puts, you know, you could suspend habeas corpus with this. I mean, you know, no, this is, this is bad.
I don't think habeas corpus is in code and charter.
It is too broad. It, this, this, this is not a good idea.
It's improper in every way.
Can you help me understand?
Yeah, I'm trying to understand as well.
Because it, it puts, it, it, it centralizes the power in the mayor. You could, with this ordinance, he could suspend the entire code of the city of Tawnytown on, at, on, on a whim.
And then you'd have to fix it within sixty days or the next council meeting, which you could call the next day.
Well, what could? No, this is, this is, no, this.
This is basically just trying to put things on legislative radar to get fixed that we cannot reasonably enforce. Again, if something's unreasonable to enforce, nah, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to instruct staff not to enforce it to begin with.
Allows the city, the, the mayor to create the city government in his image and likeness.
No, because it.
It, it, it doesn't do that. No, it doesn't do that.
It does on a temporary basis, it doesn't do it on a permanent basis, correct.
But as council, you have the ability to call an emergency meeting the next day if you're not happy with it. That's what, you, you don't understand the powers that the council actually has in the checks and balance system that it has against the mayor.
And all the, and all authority is vested through the charter. There's no authority that I can take through, through the suspension of an ordinance. All the suspension of the ordinances is basically saying, hey, let's say for instance, signs, obviously, we're having a tough time enforcing signs here, nothing about it makes sense. People, if we went by the strict code, you want to be able to have any signs up and down the streets of Tawnytown, you want to be able to have political signs.
That's not, that's not correct.
That is correct. Jim, is it correct per the strict definition of our code currently, that you would not be able to have political signs anywhere on the streets, even if it was a yard sign?
I think you would not be able to have them in any residential district.
Residential district.
That would be, that if I were, if I were asked to enforce the sign code for political signs. I think the, the biggest thing would be the ones that are. The sign code does not permit signs in any of the R districts. So R six, seventy-five hundred, ten, or twenty. It does not speak to that. There is a section in the sign code that describes signs permitted in all districts and political signs or campaign signs are not included in that section. So I would interpret that to say, if it's not permitted in all zones and it's not listed in a specific zone, I can't approve it.
And again.
Would you guys be more comfortable if you, you take out the language of suspend enforcement of? Like, is that your main objection? Like what, what is, what is the main objection?
I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not averse to trying to fix things, you know, but I'm, is the way this is written is just entirely too broad. I think we need to, I, I think we really need to.
I think we need a mechanism to, to put stuff on our radar that doesn't make sense for, for these guys to.
But that doesn't have to, that mechanism doesn't have to be, oh, the mayor's.
Well, we, as a minister.
That's what I'm saying, do we, like.
Here's the issue, as a minister.
Would getting rid of the, the suspend, suspension of whatever, whatever.
The suspended enforcement, again, that, that technically.
Thank you.
That technically doesn't do anything because as administration, we can already say, we can't enforce that, we're not going to enforce it. This is basically just a mechanism that kicks it back to council radar. And again, worst case, something gets suspended, you call an emergency meeting the next day. And this is just to explain how you could use the powers of council to basically overcome anything in here. You call a meeting the next day, you basically say, we affirm that this resolution, that this ordinance is doing what it's supposed to do and it goes back into full effect and the mayor can't suspend it again for a year anyways. So it isn't, you could literally the next day put it back into effect if you're utilizing the authority of council correctly. And that's what it comes down to is, all this does is kick it on to the agenda automatically. It gives a written statement by the mayor to the city manager and council of why this is being suspended. And then, not only that, basically, we have to also propose corrections of what might make it enforceable for the, on the administration aspect. And again, as you as a legislator, it comes down to, if you guys think it's good, reaffirm it. If you think it needs to be amended, clarified, or revised, do that. If you think it is no longer necessary, unlawful, because I'm going to tell you, we have ordinances that technically probably aren't lawful currently. Repeal it. I mean, at the end of the day, all the power of the legislator still rests with the legislator. The only thing that's happening here is basically putting it on your radar with a written notice and it has a sunset period. If you guys decide not to do anything, but you could realistically with three council members.
Stick too, right? Like if, if nothing happens and you can't.
It sunsets it and they can't do it for a year.
Yeah.
And again, I'd be fine with lowering that to, I'd be fine with lowering that to thirty days. The only reason it's sixty days is to allow a timeframe for council to discuss the ordinance if they need to. Again, they can emergency adopt or fix to it if they want. But realistically, that sixty days is just to give more leeway for the legislator to actually do it. Because again, you could call a meeting of three council members the next day and repeal, repeal the enforcement by just saying, enforce it by what that code says. And again, more than likely, we're still just going to say, well, if you haven't fixed it, what, explain how you want us to enforce it. Explain what this, what the legislative intent of this ordinance is. Because that is the problem is, is that some of this stuff doesn't make sense to try to enforce. And there is no overreach of executive authority here because at the end of the day, the administration still has the ability for the actual enforcement of the ordinance and what that looks like. All this does is put it on council review and it basically says, hey, you guys got to do something about this. And if you don't, I mean, there's really nothing else we can do. That's what it comes down to, because again, it can't be brought up for a year again, it can't be suspended for a year. You have a sixty day window, but again, you can call the meeting the next day and it goes on to the next available council agenda for review. So even if we suspend it the day before a council agenda, it'll be on the next, a day before the council meeting, it'll be on that agenda. The whole point of this is for us to start clarifying things that we believe we cannot enforce practically. I mean, I don't think this does anything.
What keeps you from putting together a list of those things right now? You know, you, you've got a resolution coming up.
I mean, that's essentially, that's essentially what a lot of this stuff is, right? Is that we are clearing through a backlog of stuff we already have. This just allows us to start, basically start kicking it back faster.
I just don't think that this is a.
Would, would maybe a more amenable solution be instead of like, let's say Chris sees something and he wants to suspend it, instead of giving him the power to suspend it immediately, why doesn't he maybe make the language something like the intent to suspend pending, you know, it coming before us at, at, at a council body, right? Like something, I mean.
My, my only thing would be just be aware that basically this is actually adding extra provisions to something we can already do. This is giving you guys written notice of when we're not enforcing something essentially.
And I'm, I'm not opposed to that. You know, I mean, this goes all the way back to the chicken ordinance, right? You know, that we were, we were not enforcing an ordinance that was already in place. And, you know, so we had to go through the, the long and torturous effort of fixing it. But.
In my opinion, this is more of a clear-cut way of it being done.
But I don't, I don't, I, I just don't think that this is the, this is the right solution But I don't, I don't, I, I just don't think that this is the, this is the right solution to that problem. I think, you know, this, this could be crafted in a different way.
But without, without telling, without giving council the official notification that, hey, we're having problems with this, how do, how do these get fixed?
I mean, that can be, but you can give that notice now anyways. What, there's nothing that stops that. There's nothing that stops the mayor from being able, from saying, hey, look, we can't really enforce this ordinance, let's talk about it. Rather than giving a blanket power to suspend any ordinance that he wants, you know, let's just go back to, to, to doing things, you know. If you have an, you have an issue, you bring it to council. If you, if you need council to work on it right away, then you call an emergency meeting. Um, I, but I don't think that, that this ordinance is the way to solve that problem. And, and, you know, it, you, while your, while your intent is noble, the next guys may not be.
The problem is, is that.
And that's, that's where, that's where the issue falls to me. It isn't just, um.
Yeah, but there's, there's nothing.
In the contemporaneous, you can't be making legislation for today for the people who are in office today. You have to look at this legislation and how it would affect somebody ten years from now.
The problem is, is that this is actually a safeguard for someone like that came along.
I don't.
It basically clarifies the actual process for doing it. Because again, right now, you could just, you could just not. This is actually given a written explanation, ways in which it can be fixed to the legislators. And again, it's up to them whether they want to fix it or at least clarify how we're supposed to enforce it. This is nothing more than what can already be done. The only thing is, is that it's actually clarifying the process for doing it. And not only that, it's actually giving a more clear picture of council of why it's being done, what is being suspended. I mean, it has sunset, it has, you guys could literally call a meeting the next day with three council members. There's no. I, I think it's fine as is. I haven't really heard a suggestion to improve it that would actually change from the substance of it. But are we good to close discussion? Either way, we still have introduction.
You would have to, like, this holds council accountable too. Like, it puts it on our agenda, so it's made, we're made aware of it and we're not just sitting around pushing it down the road longer and longer. Like, it's made aware to the public and it's on the agenda and, like, we're there to fix it.
And this, I mean, what this really does is, it does, it helps actually keep both accountable. Because it gives you the written explanation to council. And allows council to come back and say, well, we believe it's written correctly, this is how you should be enforcing it. So it's giving you guys the chance to explain it and it's actually a check on both branches because it holds both of them accountable. If there's stuff that we can't enforce, we know we can't enforce and we're not enforcing it, then we need to be shooting it up regardless. If we're shooting stuff up that needs to be changed, revised, or at least told how we should enforce it, then it should be on you guys' agenda. In my opinion, this, like, like you were saying, this adds the ability for future mayors, future people in the position to keep not only the legislators going, but to also keep the people who have to enforce this stuff going. Because we can just sit all day and say, well, you know, this ordinance doesn't make sense, we're just not enforcing it. But this actually requires us to give you written notice, a suspension of it. And again, it has timeframes for all of that. But, I mean, we.
I'd like to study this a little bit more. I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to what you're trying to do, I just don't think that this is the right vehicle.
I mean, in, intro, introduction gives you a time to study it. I mean, introduction again is not saying you're going to, it's just saying the intent. And I think the intent here is for a mechanism for the administration to shoot stuff back up to the legislative that doesn't make sense on the administrative level. I am not going to sit here and tell the staff to enforce stuff that doesn't make sense. That said, is there any additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name?
Name.
Carrie's. Up next, we have police protection standards. On the police protection standards, basically what this is doing is reclassifying police officers in adequate facility ordinance to mean patrol equivalent officers. It's setting a minimum of staffing to sixteen patrol equivalent officers. And it is giving the chief of police the ability to say, something he already kind of, something he already has in here, which is to say, if we haven't met that sixteen and there's a development coming through and they still believe they can provide adequate police, uh, protection, it's giving him the ability to still sign off on that.
Do we have an adequate public facilities ordinance that addresses this?
Currently, it just says off police officer, which also includes our administration. The idea is to take administration out of the account. Well, this is clarifying, because I don't think adequate facilities ordinance means administrative officers. I think it means boots on the ground patrol officers. I mean, why else would you tie it to population? I think this is basically just clarifying what I'd consider an error in code and given the ability of a minimum staffing to what we consider police protection in Tawnytown, with the ability of the police chief to sign off of, hey, I still believe we can provide adequate protection if a development is coming through that doesn't add to that additional load of the sixteen officers that we have. I'm looking for a motion in regards to that.
Motion to introduce.
Looking for a second.
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
Well, I, I just don't like the, I don't like the minimum staffing level, um, number in there. Um, I, you have the ratio defined further up and I think that that, that's fine. I don't, I don't like the idea of. Putting a, yeah, it's.
Well, to specify.
Of an explicit number in there, I don't think that that's.
To specify, since we're over eight thousand, you technically need seventeen patrol officers and we're nowhere close to that.
Right.
This sets a basically minimum of what we, we consider police protection in Tawnytown currently. Yeah, you could go back and change it in the future, but I think sixteen is basically what we need to cover the shifts here in Tawnytown and make sure that our streets are being protected.
And I don't, I don't disagree, but you, you, you state that further up, but I, I, I just think that, that whole paragraph D is just unnecessary.
Thousand is increasing that even further. Um, again, you'd be looking at seventeen patrol.
Right, but, right, but what I'm saying is, is that that's already up there. Uh, this paragraph D is just, um.
This is saying the department has to get up to sixteen to be considered minimally staffed to provide police protection.
I just think it's, it's, it's unnecessary and redundant.
Can you help me understand?
Hmm?
What, what about it is redundant?
Well, because you've already established the level, minimum level, um, you know, three paragraphs up. So, um, or four, whatever it is, but, you know, you've already established, um, a minimum level, so why do you need to?
Two officers for every thousand?
Yes.
If you, uh.
Let's just add an additional officer slot essentially, while that, while you are.
Right, so you're already, you've already defined it there. I just, the paragraph D just is, is, I, I just don't understand what, what it is doing in there because it's unnecessary.
These basically set the threshold for what is considered adequate, the adequate minimum police protection. It means we have to get our staffing up to sixteen patrol officers. The other one is basically saying one thousand, one thousand for, or two for every one thousand.
What's the timeframe for that? Because if we're not there now, um, you know, then we're already in violation of an ordinance. You're, you're preparing, you know, proposing to enact.
And that's basically what it's saying is we have to start getting officers.
Over what timeframe, right? I mean, the, the officers don't drop out of the sky.
I mean, again, if you're going by just the strict two for one thousand, even you, even if you reclassify patrol equivalent officers as we have here, you're still under that cap because the cap is now seventeen.
If, if in paragraph D, it said, city Tawnytown shall maintain minimum staffing level as defined in paragraph A, which shall serve as a baseline. And, because it still gives the police chief, uh, discretion as needed.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm fine with that.
I say, I, just to, just to make it not, uh, not, not be, uh, clashing. I think if we, if we made that as defined in paragraph A, it would be, it would cover everything and we'd be, and, and we'd be good to go.
I'm with that. I mean, all it does is raise that minimum.
I know, but, but it also, I mean, it's still, it still can, keeps the paragraph in there so that the police chief has the, uh, has the, the, the discretion.
That's fine.
So, if, if I understand what you just said, um, is that the staffing level in paragraph A, um, can be superseded just by the, uh, you know, by, by the chief or his designee, designee with a certification, um, that, that adequate coverage exists.
Yep, that basically says.
And then there's the line about for the proposed development, where does, where did that come from? Because that really, I, you're, this is, you're, it's like you're tying this to, to zoning code, um, just not.
Well, that's what, at the adequate facilities.
Right, and we already, which we already have.
But that's what, if you, so that's what we're doing. This is the adequate facilities for police. The, the thing here we're changing is patrol equivalent police officers. Right now, it just says police officers, which includes administration.
Well, why don't we just simply change that in the existing code?
You still have the proposed development. The bold is the, uh.
Oh, so proposed development is already in the code?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that's what the adequate facilities does.
Yeah, the bold's the changes.
All right, I'm, yeah, then that's, I'm not really, um.
This, that, basically all it does is, I mean, the chief has the authority to basically say, hey, this proposed development, it's not adding to our already population that we are already behind on in officers, you know, this, we, we still meet the adequate facilities for police protection. It still allows development to happen if it makes sense for the population.
And again, I, I, I have not.
And it strips the ability, the, the, the counting of administrative staff, right? Like, that's the whole purpose of this.
That's, that's the purpose.
And I understand that purpose. I have no, again, I don't have any issue with the purpose. Um, and I wasn't reading it in context with the adequate facilities act, you know what I mean? Because it's just presented here without the, um, without the, the rest of the, the, you know, without the context of the rest of the act. So, um, that's why, hence my confusion. All right, um, I mean, I'm certainly not against having enough police officers, that's not, that's not the question. Want to make sure we, you know, that reads correctly. And, and this may all be okay, it's just, like I said, I, I.
Yeah, as I said, the.
I didn't read it in, in that context and so.
The, the big thing is, is the patrol equivalent officer.
Yeah, and that's, and, and I'm, I'm good with that.
But making sure we still have a mechanism to override that two per thousand, because I'm going to tell you, that now puts us at seventeen and we are not at, we're not near seventeen.
Yeah, well, I know, right.
So the idea is, is we still need a mechanism to get over that for development, like, let's say, a, a restaurant wanted to open up or something like that.
That's not, you know.
But.
That's based on housing, this is based on housing.
But even, even that, you still have to sign up on, um, adequate facilities.
Do we have enough late night officers to break up bar fights?
I mean, I.
Have a bar to break up fights at?
Call you, right?
Okay, first things first. Um, but yeah, I think if we change the, if we change the thing in D.
As defined by paragraph A.
As defined by paragraph A, I think we're, we're solid.
Yeah, I, I just, I just didn't see any need for that, for the specificity of that number in there. You know, because God forbid we lose, uh.
That's something me and.
Population and you're stuck to that, you know what I mean?
That's something me and Jim talked about was a minimum and I can't remember why. Oh, the minimum is for the future offset of maybe reducing the two officers per thousand. But I know that's something we talked.
The idea would be once, once there's adequate coverage for twenty-four seven coverage that will allow officers to take leave time or, or, you know, court duty or whatever, whatever, you know, takes them off the street, um, that we may not need to continue with two officers per thousand indefinitely. So once we, once we have that critical mass for coverage of the city, we may be able to accommodate additional population without hiring, you know, the same ratio of officers once we hit that critical mass.
And that's what that minimum was setting, basically, was the standard for that in the possible future. I, I do remember that conversation. I remember why we have the minimum now.
Well, but I think if we come, if we come back, we, we come back and we, we mess with paragraph A at that point.
Yeah, that's fine. Is everybody good with the change for as defined, or as described in paragraph A?
Yeah, that's fine.
Does that make it kind of circular though?
Um.
It's, it's redefining it, but it also adds the rest of paragraph D on the bottom of it. It's basically restating it in the, in the context of paragraph D.
So this basically.
You could lose the entire first sentence of paragraph D and not change any, you know what I mean? It just, it, true.
I mean, you guys just want to strike first sentence of paragraph D? I mean, that works too.
That way it says it once in the, once in the ordinance and we're done.
All right, well, let's move.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We got more to do here.
So let's strike first sentence of paragraph D. Um, Jim, just make sure we do that between now and then. Um, so, any additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Up next, we have. What is this? Oh, this is ordinance sixteen dash twenty twenty-five. It is the repeal of chapter eighteen of the city code entitled Campaign Finance. The idea behind this is if you look at the resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven, one of the legislative priorities, um, and that is basically saying a re-overhaul of what elections look like in Tawnytown. Um, if you ever had the experience of dealing with the campaign finance section, it was definitely not written for a municipality of eighty-five hundred. Its requirements are actually stricter than a municipality of Westminster, for instance. But anyways, I'm looking for a motion in regards to that.
Motion to introduce.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
I don't understand why we need to repeal the existing ordinance first.
We have a great danger of inviting outside influences, special interests to come into the town and, uh, contribute to a particular candidate for a particular need. And it's very, the, the purpose of the ordinance originally was to maintain our elections as local elections and not be influenced by major political parties or special interest groups.
Yeah, I think, I think we're in alignment there.
Yeah, we're, we're in alignment with them.
We're in alignment there. We, we want to keep all that nonsense out.
We won't have any protection at all.
Well, that's, that's. Our next election isn't for two years.
This is basically, this is basically holding you guys accountable that something has to get.
Well, I would rather see something left in the code and, and come up with alterations first, uh, before you take this out. Do not, no, this is the wrong way to do it. You don't want to repeal this legislation and then have nothing.
I don't, I'm going to be honest with you, you can't alter campaign finance to make sense in Tawnytown.
But until you, until you have a replacement ready in hand, you can't just simply take this out. Because what happens if we don't enact something else? Then there's no rules.
Well, the R campaign finance section has so many loopholes, it's ridiculous. There's so many gray areas, it needs to be reworked completely from the ground.
I'm not saying that it doesn't, Rachel, I'm just saying that we can't go and, and delete the current ordinance without a replacement.
So you're telling me within two years, we cannot get.
No, he's, he's not going to know.
What I'm saying is if something happens and we all get run over by a bus and nothing is ever enacted, you, you don't have anything. And so it's, it's a bad idea to completely repeal, uh, the existing ordinance until you have a replacement.
Here's what I'll tell you, regardless, and let's say you guys forget to even address it or something. Let's say you keep it in, you forget to address it, next camp, next election cycle comes along. I'm going to tell you, this one hundred percent discourages people from running. I mean, I know this election, in particular, we had people discouraged from running just because of, you can't make sense of that ordinance. And.
Not disagree.
Again, in my, in my opinion, this is.
It's a mess.
This is basically putting it on the legislators that they need to do something within ten, within two years. I mean, if they don't, then people get to run elections. I know the idea is what happens if outside influence comes in? I'm going to tell you, you can already, you can already do that in the campaign finance. Because it is not written in a conducive way that makes sense. It is not written in a conducive way that would actually bars anybody from doing anything.
Not arguing the point.
But.
What I'm saying is, it, it's just a bad idea to repeal it without having a replacement in place.
Oh, a bad idea.
Certainly could do a repeal and replace within a, you know, a single ordinance.
If we craft a new one and do a repeal and replace, I think that's the way to go. But I wouldn't want to pull this ordinance out without having some replacement in.
So if you want to play the, the worst case scenario game, is it the worst case that if you were to go with a repeal, replace approach in a single ordinance, the worst case, council does nothing. Two years from now, we have the existing campaign finance ordinance. Or if you repeal and don't replace, and then worst case, you can't agree on something in two years, then you have nothing. So which is the worst case scenario for you?
If I were to, if I were to answer you honestly.
Is what should drive the decision.
It's actually better not to have campaign finance.
No.
Because the campaign finance ordinance is, I'm trying to think of a good term to use that isn't offensive.
I will say so, some cities don't have one.
It doesn't, yeah, well, I'm going to tell you, when I look at the other municipalities, Tawnytown is one of the few, few with a campaign finance ordinance. And our campaign finance ordinance is structured after the state for state elections because apparently the council who put the send in do their, what I would say, due diligence to make sure it makes sense for a small municipality. This one hundred percent disincentivizes people to run. And again, your idea, my thing would be, I'd prefer more people to run than less people to run. If your idea is outside influence and money's going to come into play, I mean, I think that's why this happened before this ordinance was put into place, if I'm familiar correctly, and it didn't work out. I mean, I think what happened was, was people, I don't want to say they wanted to scare people away from running for office, but that's what it feels like. but that's what, it feels like this ordinance was intended to do. Because there isn't a paragraph in the campaign finance that I probably couldn't find an error with that doesn't make, that doesn't conflict.
Well, yeah, while I was not city manager at the time that this was developed, there certainly was a campaign cycle prior to the city having campaign finance regulation where there was significant investment in a campaign and no one knew where the money came from. That was the trigger. Certainly, the reaction may have been stronger than absolutely necessary. But the city has seen an influx of funding to campaigns with, you know, and, and the idea, I think, in, in broad terms was just make sure people know where the money is coming from to support the candidates. So, perhaps it is overly complicated or unclear in some areas, and I think we've, we've hashed that out over the last couple of years. But again, the question, I guess, is.
Of course, that might be the design of this whole thing, is to hide the money, so.
Well, so, the question, again, back to the question, you know, if, if there's any consideration to a repeal, replace, ultimately, it's up to the council to come to agreement on putting something new in to replace this.
And again, I know it's on the legislative priority for, for it to be prepared and presented, a replacement for it. And I think that's a.
No problem maintaining that on the priority, but I don't use.
If I'm correct, it's on the ninety-day priority. It might be the one twenty. But either way, you know, this is a priority to get replaced. I mean, I, I could care less one way or the other. But there is no doubt in my mind that campaign finance does not work in its current form, any way, shape, or form. As for, as far as whatever the intent was, I mean, I just saw last election where you definitely weren't, you know, accounted for the money of where it was coming from. But it's a.
Instead of a full repeal, could it be a suspension until some, some particular date if nothing is done? And then it, it goes back into effect, like, say, worst-case scenario, as. But yeah, it's like a safety mechanism, right? Like, you could, you could say, okay, it's suspended until such a date that.
The safety mechanism is that it won't even come into play for another year at a, at a.
Well, right, like, I mean, a lot of this is, is kind of moot, because like, there's no election for two years anyways. But like, if, if, if the objection is. Well, if, if, I feel like if the objection is that people are afraid of, you know, get outside influences, outside money and all that, well, if, if, if we have a provision in here saying, okay, well, if nothing is done, then this comes back, then I think that's another way to lit a fire up on our butts, because I think a lot of us, I mean, myself having just done it knows it's a nightmare, and there's a lot of stupid stuff in there, and let's, I'd like to see it, see it overhauled.
Yeah, I'm not arguing that point. I'm just saying that you don't, it's not, never a good idea to repeal this, something like. At least you have some structure and some rules, and if you repeal it, you got nothing. You know, what happens in that meantime, between the time that it's repealed and you replace it? You know, I.
It could be a good test of the temporary suspension and temporary administration suspension, administrative suspension. Because that puts it in a sixty-day window to get fixed, talked about, whatever. But again, that's, I don't know if anything, that's a big one to touch. That, that's going to require, that, that one's going to require time, and I. Time if you want, time if you wanted.
I'd rather have more than the sixty days.
Time if you wanted to do what it's intended to do, in a way that is conducive to elections.
But the existing ordinance does not need to be repealed to do that. And I, you know, the proper way to do this would be to do, come up with your new, with new legislation, fix the issues, fix the problems, and do a repeal and replace. But to leave us without any regulation at all, for whatever length of time, just invites trouble.
I'm relatively indifferent.
I, I, I think we're better on the repeal and replace. I, I don't like, this feels like we're going naked.
Sorry?
I said, this feels like we're going naked. And so, I, we've already got it in the resolution to do this. Let's do it.
Right, you, you, further down the line here, we have a resolution, you can go ahead and do it. Make sure we go ahead and do it.
I understand that this was to, to light a fire, but that's a little warm fire.
It's already burning here.
My, my, my thing is, just to be completely honest, is the town is better without campaign finance. Because undoubtedly, that ordinance, the only thing it restricts is your ordinary person who doesn't understand what that, what that ordinance says. That is the only person it's restricting. I mean, that's, this ordinance does literally nothing it's intended to do. And no offense to people who adopted it or anything like that, but you adopted a state campaign financing municipality. That's just my regard, my remarks on it.
Did we already, we didn't.
You have a motion in second on the floor.
Did we?
What was that?
He didn't move yet. He had a second for introduction, but we have not voted on it.
Well, everybody good on question, comment, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Dead? Oh, the water and sewer rates, okay. Ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-five, water and sewer rates. Basically, this ordinance is saying that there will be a yearly workshop dedicated to water. That'll happen in, what does it have, April of each year, starting with a five percent reduction currently, which is something that's already in the budget and being worked on elsewhere. The workshop shall be advertised, and the city administration should take all measures, all measures necessary, basically, to make sure that the public is aware and attendance is as best as it can be. The idea is to make people aware of what is going on with water as best as we can, and make informed decisions at the workshop every year. Whether that be an increase, a decrease, a stay the same, the idea is just to try to get people involved with the water and sewer. And again, if the five percent cuts, you know, if we have to readdress that here, that's where it would be addressed, when staff can bring adequate reasoning to the floor for it. I'm looking for a motion in regards to it.
Motion introduced.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Questions, comments, concerns by council?
Will the reduced rate fund the enterprise fund, or will it be in a deficit position?
Well, it's definitely not going to be in a deficit position from what we had talked about earlier. It's just going to be making five percent less than it currently does.
I think amounted to about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars plus, somewhere in that.
How about a hundred and fifty?
Hundred and fifty-ish, give or take.
I think it was like a.
It might have been one seventy.
It was like, it was like one sixty-eight or one sixty-nine.
The users of the water and sewer system.
Yeah.
I think we covered it.
We covered it earlier.
I think we covered all that.
Property owners subsidize the water and sewer rates. Renters.
Sorry, that doesn't make sense to me.
Where does that come from?
They, they pay through, pay, pay for that through pass-through.
Individual. Usage.
Well, but it's pass-through, though. You pay for it, either through, you know, whether.
Really depends on your landlord.
Bundled into your rent, or, or whatever, like, you're, you're not, if you're a landlord, right, and, and you're not covering these expenses, like, you're, you can't be a landlord for very long.
Up to the landlord to decide what to do, about that.
Sure.
Yeah, when I, when I was renting, I actually was paying water.
Regardless, an enterprise fund needs to stand on its own. You have to have enough revenue.
Yes, of course.
Yes.
To pay the bills to run the water and sewer department.
Yes.
And that's the question I ask. Do we have enough revenue?
Yes.
To pay the bills?
Yes.
Utility budget is balanced, as presented.
Like, that can actually be, can that be seen in this utility fund chart that we have, this one? If I were to reduce revenues by five percent and do math, right, is that, is that basically where, where that would get me? Well, it's, it's sporadic, because it looks like it's, it's the quarterly pay, payment, right? So, like, you don't get very, very many payments for two months, but then you get the bulk of payments in one month. So, like, really, you're netting out three months by, by quarterly, is what it looked like to me when I was reading this earlier. And, okay, so, 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 yeah, you're, I think, very quick math earlier, right? It was like up by, I don't know, eight hundred or something, and, and drops to like six, is basically what it, and that's, that's three quarters. So, you're probably talking like seven hundred and fifty K over.
And just to focus, I mean, we already talked about the reduction in rate earlier, you know, this main, this main part is mainly just going over the, the water system, essentially, or not the, the review workshop yearly. It's basically just putting in a mandated workshop yearly in April to present a comprehensive plan from the staff of, you know, what their recommendation of, where we're sitting, yada, yada, yada. So, council can make an informed decision of whether they should raise rates, lower rates, or maintain the same rates. Again, the five percent, in my opinion, is more of just a reprieve while that is going on.
I, I mean, because as I read, as I read this, and I've gone back to the, back to the, the front page of the, of the budget, right, we have about one point, about two point seven million dollars in projected revenue, and about two point seven million dollars in projected expenses. So, right now, in, to answer your question, that, that's balanced in terms of, of water fee, water and sewer fee revenue versus water and sewer costs, operational costs.
Balance it here.
Right. You know, so what, what, what isn't in that balance is the, we have debt service on the water and sewer, and. So, that's eight, nine hundred thousand dollars plus that is not covered. So, where does, how does that get paid?
The deficit is made up by property taxes. That's where it comes from. Property owners are, are burdened with a higher property tax rate, subsidizing the water and sewer department, the people are using that. Using water and sewer, you need to pay the bill for water and sewer. So, that's, that's the only point that I'm trying to make. It needs to stand on its own. It needs to fund itself. And when I left office the last time, we were able to do that. Something happened in the last six years that we aren't able to do that. Again, it's, the, the state law requires us to have.
Sorry, what do you mean, we aren't able to do that?
Just, just so you're aware, it is currently balanced.
It requires us to have enterprise funds that are, that are independently sustainable. They can't be subsidized by property taxes, which is what's happening now.
Jim, is our water currently being subsidized by property taxes?
We've, we've been meeting the operating budget with the user fee, with the water and sewer user rates.
However many years, right?
There, with the exception of debt service. So, where we have borrowed money for capital projects, again, because we're not building enough reserve to pay for the maintenance at times.
Right.
Right, we've.
So, that's, that's the number that stands out.
Right. We have used fund balance to pay debt service for capital projects. So, that, that kind of go back, goes back to, I think, the, the structural problem with, with the system and the charges, that, you know, the, the operating revenue, the water and sewer user rates should be generating enough money that it can pay for those capital expenses, too, for those, those big repair projects. The only thing it shouldn't pay for is building additional capacity. That should be charged to developers. But the maintenance of the system, including money we have to borrow to maintain the system, or have had to borrow in the past, really should be paid by the user rates. And we, we take money from utility fund balance to pay debt service. And that, that has varied from year to year. But as a budget tool, we do that to maintain the rates, so that we don't have to raise the rates. And then hopefully, we, we, we tend to budget with a under-promise, over-deliver kind of mentality. We would rather budget conservatively on the revenue and a little bit more worst-case on the expenses, and then come out, you know, with a surplus than the other way around. I mean, ideally, it's going to net, you know, it'll be, you know, a perfect world. You know, it'll come out perfectly. We spend exactly what we expected, you know, everything cost exactly what we expected. But that's not very realistic, so.
But we, we've got the seven point six million that's dedicated for capital, for capital improvements.
Right.
So, we're using that to pay the debt on the capital improvements.
On some, some previous ones.
Okay, we have in the past, yeah.
Yes.
So, it's working the way it's supposed to.
Well, it's, it's a little convoluted, because there's been some refinancing and things like that. So, it's really hard to go back and track exactly what projects were, were, were which. So, we're still carrying debt from, from the wastewater treatment plant when it was constructed. I believe that debt's probably been refinanced into something else at this point. But, but that would be, okay, that, that's an example of we were under a consent order with the Department of the Environment because our old plant was overflowing regularly. Whenever it rained, the plant would overflow. So, we had to fix it. So, the new plant was designed to, you know, meet current nutrient removal standards at the time, but then also to allow for growth. So, the additional cost associated with building a plant with a larger capacity was supposed to be paid for by impact fees, benefit assessment fees. The cost of replacing the plant with the existing capacity was supposed to be paid for by a base fee that was charged for, for a couple of years. So, so a scenario like that, you know, there was a capacity enhancing part of it that was paid for by the benefit assessment, the other piece. And, and as the city grew, we did start collecting more base fee revenue than was projected. But very quickly, people tired of the base fee, and even though the base fee was intended to be applied for the life of the loan, within a few years, people were complaining about, you know, this base fee was supposed to be temporary, and, and it was, but it was twenty years temporary, not five years temporary. And that's when, that's basically, there were some arguments made at the time, and I'm, I'm going off on a tangent a little bit here, but bear with me.
Lot of history here, so we got to, need a history lesson.
A workshop would really.
The argument at the time was, everybody paid the same base fee. It was originally, you know, presented as, everybody has a share of the system. Everybody uses the system, and the base fee gave everybody an equal share. The argument against that was, the little old widow, you know, that, that lives alone, hardly uses any water, is paying the same thing as a family of seven, who uses a lot more water, but, or typically might. So, the rates were adjusted so that they were revenue-neutral. So, we did away with the base fee and increased the rates, so that it was, you know, the same amount of revenue coming in, so we could still pay the bills. So, we continued for many years to borrow money for capital projects, because they had to be done, and we didn't have time to save for it.
Yeah.
So, some of those projects did enhance capacity. You know, we, we did an interceptor line where we got rid of, like, twelve-inch line and replaced it with eighteen. So, that increased the capacity. So, monies for, from, you know, impact fees from developers were used for part of that. Fund balance, utility fund balance was probably used for part of it. So, so for some projects, that is the, using that benefit assessment money is the appropriate avenue to use. In other projects, it should be coming from the surplus that the user rates generate above the annual operating expenses, because it's not building new capacity, it's just a maintenance project.
Okay, and we are, we are still in a surplus above?
Yes, yes, so, I'm, I'm not, I'm not saying it's going to bankrupt the city, you know.
Just go back to the property tax thing. Property tax is not being used to cover, it's coming out of the. Property tax is not being used to cover, it's coming out of the utility fund, which-
Right.
For the capital projects, which is what it's supposed to be used for anyways.
Many, many years ago, enterprise fund was subsidized by general fund revenue in the, in the mid nineties.
Yeah, the early two thousands, I remember talking with Daryl about that one.
When I first came on council, it was, water rates were very low, and they were, I think, subsidized by the utility fund. And, um, that, that was the way it was done, I think, in like ninety-six, ninety-seven, and, and at that point, it was like, hey, we, we shouldn't be doing this, it needs to pay for itself.
Yeah.
And, um, that was the first big rate adjustment.
But, but what, but we're-
But currently, we're not using general fund revenue tax dollars to-
Yeah, that, I was gonna say, that's mostly, yeah, where I was going was, we are still in a surplus with the, with the income to, to, to outgo on the, on the rates. So we are still putting into that, that fund. Not, I don't think so. I mean, not as I, you know, as you read this, you know, right now, you know, the, the water service fees, nine hundred and fifty thousand, and the sewer service fee, a hundred, one million, eight sixty-six, so there, you're, um, two point eight million, right? And your, your water and sewer expenditures are about two point eight million. So, um, then you've got standpipe rental and late payment fees and some interest income, and that, you know, would take away the debt service on the water side, but what you still end up with is five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars as debt service that isn't covered anywhere, and we're pulling money out of the, um, fund balance to cover that debt service.
Which is for capital projects, which is what-
Okay, well, I'm, I'm-
Which is what the utility fund is for.
All right. I just wanna make sure that we're all talking about the same numbers.
Yeah.
So, you know, yes, yes, the, the water, what we're charging for water and sewer pays for our costs for water and sewer, but there are these other costs that are not, um, not being, not being recouped, that we're having to pay out of, out of fund balance. But how many, for how long can we go on pulling eight hundred thousand dollars out of fund balance to pay this debt service?
How much are we putting into fund balance?
That's what I was kinda getting at earlier, when, when I, I asked to see kinda like these cash flow projections, uh, you know, projected out. You, you can make reasonable inferences on like what, well, what are, what are, what are my expected expenses for ca, capital projects, what, what's the, the debt service rate, right? Like, you can put that, all of that in a model, and we can see it, it projected out for like five or ten years.
Budget.
Exactly, yeah. So like, that's, that's what I was saying I'd like to see, because right now, it looks to me like we have the money and fund to, to, to do whatever we need to do, and, and like, I, I'd like to, 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 you know, reduce the, the, the rate for next year, and then hopefully that can give staff time to prepare the thing that I asked for, so that we can make a, a more long-term, uh, have a, a long-term idea to understand what these cash flows are, and if we need to, to, to change the rates or, or, or do something to, to make sure that the, the, the money jives, right, then, then we make that next year. Like, and, and we have to, we would have to reassess this on a yearly basis, right? So like, again, that, that gives staff time to, to get all these numbers for us, so we can sit, sit, sit here and do what we're doing now, and nitpick at it, and, and go through their models.
And that's what, that's what essentially this is, is creating that mechanism for once a year, again, that gives your, it gives a whole year for staff to basically compile this information, present it, and then for council to make its determination based on that information, as well as giving the public time and a chance to actually see what all goes into it.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of people don't understand, like, the, the water stuff, I mean-
They don't. And it's, it's not, it's not to their fault, I mean, it is complicated, I mean, look at us up here talking about it. My thing would be basically, again, I'm, I'm a proponent of this workshop, I think it's a good way to get people involved, that they wanna be involved in what's going on with the water system, and the five percent is really a reprieve until we can have that workshop.
Yeah.
Like, get a staff a year to get all this together, which I don't think is unrealistic for them to do a real comprehensive overview of what all this is.
But was the five percent in the budget already?
Yes.
It's in the current budget.
Yeah, all right, but, so, all right, all that aside, I mean, eventually, we have to address the idea that the, the fund balance is a cash cow that we can keep pulling out of, because it's not growing.
You can't do it forever, though.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's not, it's not, without growth, without growth in the city, that fund balance isn't going anywhere.
Correct.
Except down.
Correct.
Um, so, uh, the other issue that I have with this ordinance is, um, it says effective immediately upon passage of this ordinance, um, is reduced by five percent, um-
I mean, this will basically, this will be in conjunction with everything else, I mean, if one thing gets shot down, I mean, what really does it, is the fiscal year-
Well, I, I mean, do you, I, does this really require an ordinance to change that, or can-
No, we can strike, we can strike section one, and then section two, I believe you should codify the annual water system review workshop.
No problem with that.
Because I believe, if you're gonna make mandatory reporting, you need to make it in the code.
But I think, can we, can we not do the rate reduction as a resolution as opposed to an ordinance?
Yeah, that's what we do, well, well, no, because our rate has to be passed-
The actual rate is an ordinance, but-
And that's what this is, right here.
And I, we did that already.
Twenty-five.
All right, so then we need to-
And that's gonna be adjusted for the five percent, and the budget already has the five percent.
But then, we don't need to do this, we don't need to have this section one in here, then.
We can take out section one, so, let's go ahead and act-
It's kind of a redundancy in that.
Let's go ahead and act section one, make section two, section one, and that basically puts into place the annual workshop, at least.
Yes.
Which, which is, again, that is the main intent of this, 'cause we've already covered everything else in the operating budget and the water and sewer rates. Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, did we already do motion, right? Jim, did I already do motion?
Did we, did we move on there?
Yeah, yeah, we were in discussion.
Okay. Okay, I'm looking for additional comments, questions, concerns before I go to vote. Here and none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name?
Aye.
Here he is.
I would like to just point out real quickly before we move on that, that we have hired consultants, Davenport, to do a rate study for the city in years past. We haven't necessarily stuck with the recommendations, um, but we also didn't do all of the capital projects that were intended or that were planned at that point in time, but that may be something for us to consider revisiting, to have somebody who has expertise in setting rates and evaluating the, the, you know, the revenue stream, the potential inflationary factors, as well as the, the capital projects plan, and have somebody who really specializes in this come up, come in and do an evaluation for us. It's not cheap, but, you know, it delivers a really good product, so, just food for thought.
Cool, thank you. Um, next up, we have adoption resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven legislative priority. This is basically setting a six-month priority for legislative items, there's a whole host of items. Again, this is basically setting a priority for staff to work on and present to council new items, new ordinances, basically get stuff on your radar for the next six months, and then after six months-
I guess my question is, do we really need a resolution for that?
I think it sets you guys on the path, essentially. If, this is the items that staff has been instructed to prepare over the next hundred and eighty days, and then ended, it also says at the, you know, at the term of the six-month legislative agenda, basically a retreat of council to propose the next six month legislative agenda. It basically keeps the cycle of legislative items on your guys' track.
Nah, I just don't think we need to-
To me, this is just a project list of, these are the things that we wanna work on, um, you know, it can, it can be amended, changed however we need to, but, um, you know, I, I think project lists and, and where some things at, um, and, and like a progress chart of some kind is, is, it, I know for me, it makes it very, very useful, 'cause, you know, I'm a very disorganized person, and, uh, sometimes I need a little bit of organization in my life to make sure we stay on track, so that's, for me, that's what this is about.
And this isn't committal, this is basically saying, this is items that you want presented over the next six months. The idea is, 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 I mean, I can, I can have staff work on all this, but you guys have a resolution that really sets it out, sets a six-month timetable for all of this, you don't have to approve, you don't have to approve, you don't have to deny, it basically is just gonna put it onto your agenda over the next couple, over the next six months, and in that re-
These are, these are priorities, and, hey, give us the information.
And that regard, it also allows residents to kinda see where your focus is over the next six months.
Yeah, I just don't know that we need a resolution for, for that. Establish a list of the things we wanna do without having a resolution to do it. I, we talk a lot about wanting to keep government, you know, within its, within its bounds and waters, and, you know, we really need to create a resolution to make a to-do list.
I mean, in, in the fairness, though, that's the reason why nothing is given.
I mean, I, I, well, nothing hap, right, and I, but I, this is a different council, this is a new day, right? So-
I wanna be called out if we're not getting anything done, right? Like, so, like, also, my thinking is like, hey, saying to the, the public, people watching, like, hey, these are things that, that we're working on getting done, if we're not getting these things done, then come yell at me, you know? That's, that's kinda one of the other ways that I look at it, 'cause-
Let's get to motion, so we can go motion to the discussion. Looking for a motion in regards to it?
Motion to introduce.
Uh, this will be a motion to adopt, resolution.
Oh, this is, sorry, yeah, resolution.
Same night. Um, looking for a second?
Second.
Comments, questions, concerns by council? Now, let's start that. I mean, sorry, just-
Parting, Jim.
What's up, Jim?
Part two.
Oh, of course.
Just to quick-
Part one was sufficient.
Clarification on the, um, within ninety days establishment of a, of a Main Street committee. Um, just to clarify, that's to have a framework-
That's more of a framework, yes, framework.
That, that we may not have a volunteer body staffed by that time.
Let's do establishment of a framework for Main Street Committee.
Thank you.
Let's change that. Again, the main, the main point of this is so residents can look at, this is a timeline of things you guys are looking to get done. This kinda keeps staff as well on track of what they need to be presented to council over the days, um, 'cause again, I could just, I mean, I could always shoot blindly with staff and just throw some stuff on you guys' agenda, or you guys can come up with stuff. Again, I know we've already talked about the idea of getting stuff on with the administrative suspension, but this is basically a timetable of, I think, uh, again, it could be, we get to it, staff presents it, nobody likes the idea, you shoot it down. But I'd rather not be shooting in the dark with staff, trying to figure, you know, trying to figure out what to put on your guys' agenda that you might like. This kinda gives us a guideline of what to get on there, and when to, and when to try to get it on there. It basically sets priority goals, I mean-
Thank you, guys.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, name? Here he is. Um, next up, we have a resolution for the dedication of the police department to Daryl G. Hill. Basically, this has given staff the ability to work on this, saying that council's behind the idea of it, and, uh, again, there's gonna be obviously some expenditure behind a plaque, dedication ceremony, everything like that.
Are we dedicating the building to, or the entire department?
I was looking-
I'm not, I, I, if we're-
Yeah, let's change that to Police Department Building.
That's a good catch.
Everybody has to wear this hat with a picture of Daryl on it. Daryl, I'm sorry.
To be fair, I know, he'd have, he'd have a good laugh over it, that's for sure.
That he would.
Get a mural in the, yeah.
But, um-
Just being clear.
Again, I, you know, talk with staff, you know, um, talking with Kim, you know, this, I think this is a fitting dedication for what he pursued when he was a public official.
Jimmy gives you something to do with all that stuff in Daryl's office, you don't know what to do with.
Yeah, but I know, you know, when I was talking with Kim, one of the things I really wanna do is get a copy of his, uh, governor's citation, 'cause I, if you've ever talked with Daryl, he was very proud of his governor's citation for his, uh, safety committees and whatnot, so, again, uh, the, the idea behind this resolution is just the council's backing that we're getting to work on this and make some expenditures in regards to it.
Yep.
Um, question, or, I'm looking for a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Any additional comments, questions, concerns? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? It is carried. Um, next up, monthly newsletter. So if there was a change in this and it didn't make it into your guys' packets, um, Jim, do you wanna go over what the change was? This, the change was basically, there'd be initial distribution to mailboxes that allowed you to opt in for mail. So if you don't want it, if you're not gonna use it, then don't opt in, that'll save the city money. But we do still wanna provide the service, so yes, you can opt in for the mail one, or again, we're gonna be providing it online as well. The change basically says, you know, and Jim, you wanna go over what that change from the current one is?
I'm not gonna try to do it from memory, so.
And this isn't, again, this isn't gonna be anything extravagant, this is a newsletter, just going out with some basic information.
But again, I don't know why we need to have a resolution for it, we just direct staff to do it, I'm, I'm just-
Well, the, the resolution binds staff into doing it. I mean, realistically, you should do a resolution for-
Not that I'm-
Unopposed to it, just trying to make sure we-
shall resume publication beginning June twenty twenty-five, it shall be initially distributed via mail to all addresses within zip code two-one-seven-eight-seven and shall be distributed no later than the fifth of each month.
And the reason we do-
We deleted the word monthly in the first sentence, I believe, and we added initially.
And initially, yeah. And again, the idea between the two-one-seven-eight-seven is, is, if you've ever been to our events, we do have a lot of people from the surrounding area that take part in it, um, people who are actively involved in our city from the outside area. The idea is to just make sure if they wanna be aware of the events we're having, that they can be aware of the events we're having, um, 'cause I'm gonna tell you, when they come to our events, you know, if we print out the Main Street events, for instance, those are people who will also shop at our businesses, um.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, no, no opposition whatsoever to the entire plan, I'm just saying, we really need a resolution for it.
Again, I, I-
That's all, I'm, I'm-
I prefer it in resolution form because it commits us more than just going around doing a consensus.
And another change there was the, the original version talked about it being in mailboxes, I think, by a certain time, and we changed it to be distributed by-
Distributed for, yeah.
Yeah, just distribute it, 'cause, you know, that could be in the mailbox, that could be online, but the idea is to have an online version for those who don't need it in the mailbox, and then opt in to save the money from sending to everybody.
I think my only question, uh, it says, uh, beginning June twenty twenty-five, like, is that a problem for, for you guys? Do you have the capacity to do that?
I know originally, I know originally the idea was that we had the capacity to do it, but Jim, I'll let you, I mean, we can-
As long as it's, and, and the, the content is laid out here, it's something that we used to do, so it shouldn't be a too big of a hurdle.
It's really, there's no big change.
Postage is not in the budget for this, we cut postage to fund some of the other stuff, so we need to figure that out.
Sure.
The idea would be if you guys approve this, we'd go back for a budget amendment, and that's why we kinda wanted a resolution form two, 'cause that's the committal, 'cause our next thing is gonna be looking at budget amendment. The most expensive part is gonna be that initial, that initial mail.
Sure.
Um, other than, um, any additional comments, questions, concerns? Did already, sorry, it's been a long night of a lot of different stuff.
I'm lost here. She did the, the motion to, like, we're, we're into the discussion part, now it's the vote.
Okay, we're in discussion, just making sure, you never know what part of this is-
We had to get to discussion, 'cause we started discussion before the discussion.
Sometimes we start the discussion before-
I don't think we did one for the newsletter.
I don't think-
That was for Daryl, that I-
Yeah, Rachel did, yeah.
Clara, straighten us out, what we got?
Okay, looking, looking for a motion.
Motion to adopt the resolution.
Looking for a second.
Okay, second.
Um, additional comments, questions, concerns by council?
Oh, please, God, no.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, name? Here he is. Um, next one, I know this is one some of us have talked about for a long time now, public comment at Monday meetings. Um, obviously, we're not the, we're not the crowd drawers we used to be, but, um, there's, there's really, uh, there's no reason we can't have public comment at both meetings. I think it serves a, a good public interest, it allows people to participate if they weren't able to come Wednesday, or if they're not able to come that Monday, they can go there Wednesday, really gives people options, and, uh, whenever so pressed for time, except for maybe this meeting, um, to where we can entertain a lot of public comment. I mean, again, we always, we always have space for, we, and I'll tell you, I can't speak for the council, but I, I encourage public comment. Um, if you're looking to do it, you know, people will say, I don't, I don't rein in people on the three minutes. My thing is, is we're here for you. If you've got something to say, we'll let you say it. And again, this is mainly just to really, really reopen that. Again, I know, um, Councilmember Tillman, you know, we've, we've talked about this and-
I would actually like to add to this that, um, on, you know, during the workshop meetings, that comment be allowed on item-by-item basis. Uh, I'd like to see that added to this.
Yeah.
Before, so before we vote on this, I'd like to see that redone and add that, have that added.
So let's do public comment during Monday and Wednesday council meetings. Let's add, allow public comment to each individual agenda item. Good with the team?
I'm, I'm good with that. Do you, you want to rewrite that and then we'll, we'll redo this in the meeting coming up next week?
Well, we can, um, I mean, do you guys just want to say, adopt as amended? Because you can amend it now.
Let's just wait, I mean, I can wait until the, the next meeting. Let's just-
We're meeting next week.
Let, you know, let, let, you know, let's get the thing written correctly.
It's a resolution. It's all like an order.
Oh, that's-
Everyone okay with that?
Sorry, I'm actually confused where we're at right now. Are we-
He wants to add it to where we-
I, I, I got that part. I'm, I'm confused.
Technically, technically, you guys, you guys can adopt it now on the basis that adopt as amended with language that says each individual agenda item at Wednesday, which staff would just get that. They'd be able to be, sign it. Or we can just wait. I mean, I, either works, um.
Or we can just get the full language and just do it next week.
Yeah, let's just do it next week with the full language.
Yeah.
I have fun with whatever you guys want to do.
Sounds good.
It does the same thing, right?
Well, that's what the, 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 the result's the exact same.
Yes, exactly. It doesn't, it doesn't change it.
Get the language and, and, yeah.
Okay. Um, Jim, City Manager report?
Oh.
Oh, actually, I need a motion to table it, don't I? The resolution.
I don't think we had a motion to introduce it.
Yeah, there's a motion to adopt.
Or approve it, rather.
Fine with whatever. Yeah. Um, City Manager report?
Hours ago.
Yeah, anything, anything?
I was going to say, I know you guys all heard the, the first version, so if there are any questions, be happy to field them.
Any additional questions, comments, concerns for the City Manager? Hearing none, I'm proceeding forward. New business, monthly financial report. Not sure if anybody had a chance to look through what our financial reports look like. Um, I know this is new to some of you, so feel free to ask.
I'll ask him in private later.
A lot of stuff.
I mean, it's-
There's, there's a lot of stuff in there and I haven't any time to comb through it all.
You guys want to wait till the twenty-first on it? I mean, we have a meeting on the twenty-first.
Yeah, I know, but does this, does this need to be approved, uh, now, Jim, or?
I don't think-
It, it should be approved this month.
Just during the month, okay. Yeah, we, we can wait. If you, you guys want a chance to look at it first? Yeah, we can wait.
Jim, let's move it to twenty-first.
Okay. I mean, I just usually go through it and look for things that jump out, you know?
I mean, it's-
Yeah, the material, the, the material items.
Right.
Once you, once you guys do it once, it'll flow the next time.
Most of it is just mundane, is all get out, but, um, you know, like I say, every once in a while, you come through.
You find, you find something-
Well, you're right, everyone's, and, and you look for the things that jump out at you, it's like, oh, wait a minute, what's this? The check register is a lot more fun to look at than the, than the rest of the report.
Yeah, that's what I like, looking at the checks.
Accounts, accounts payables, um, same thing. Do you guys want to, did you have you guys had a chance to?
And I looked, I did go through the accounts payable report earlier today, so I'm okay with it, but if everybody else wants to wait, we can wait till next week.
We can do it now, we can wait. I mean, we already put something to May twenty-first.
Don't mind.
Let's put it to May twenty-first.
Take it, take it a week.
I'll just point out in, in your accounts payable, take a look at the, um, Whipper Will Drive, um, Fatoma Edison charge. Just thirty-five thousand dollars this month.
Yikes.
Just to put a little perspective on-
Or which one?
What did you want to point? Is it this?
Whipper Will Drive, that's the wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, no, that's a good check.
Ah.
Man, you're really, you're really trying to make your case here, Jim.
I just, just want to give a little perspective.
Fair enough. Um, okay, is everybody good for, if we move on? I know you guys are looking for it. Up next, we got approval of mowing contract extension for one year, Eckers Lawn Service. Again, this is, Jim, this is a contract we already have, right? Just, I mean, it says extension, but-
Correct, right. We, we had the option to extend with that contract that was approved years ago.
Need a motion in regards to it?
Yes.
Yeah, this we do.
Yeah, yeah, oh, I know we do. I'm saying, we need a motion here. Yep.
Yeah.
Move to, uh, okay, I got, uh, Nick with the move to adopt. Any a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Rachel.
Go ahead, Tillman.
You beat me to it. Rachel's got the second.
Okay, Rachel's got the second. Um, comments, questions, concerns by council?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Carries. Um, next up, we have ratification of Meadow Brook Section Six surety release. Looking for a motion in regards to it. Jim, did you, did you have any comments on it?
That in the packet? I didn't see that.
Oh, shoot.
That, that's not in, that's not in the packet. That is not, yeah.
We can, since it's ratification, we can put, do it for next week if, I apologize if that memo didn't get in there.
Yeah, it's not in here, so let's push that.
Okay, Jim.
The next thing I have are the special events permits.
Yeah. Okay, so let's go ahead and push. Jim, that surety is being pushed to May twenty-first. Approval of special event permit, Tawny Town Pride Memorial Park, June twenty-second. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Move to approve.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Um, additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay? Carries. Um, up next, we have approval of special event permit, Carroll Kennel Club Fast Cat Coursing Trails, Memorial Park, August thirtieth and thirty-first. Looking for a motion in regards to that?
Is there anything in here about what, about cleaning up, um, dog waste, shall we say?
Technically, they have to per ordinance, but, I mean-
Does that mean they're actually going to do it?
Oh, I mean, does that mean they're actually, I mean, I agree, does, I mean, they're actually going to do it.
Unless the mayor suspends your ordinance, which-
Hey, you get, you get, that's sixty days of no, or sixty days unless you guys can be to meet in the next day.
Sixty days of no dog poop.
Yeah, I mean, listen.
But, but, you know, but there is a classic example, right, where sixty days, and, and really anything, any of that, um, if he suspends the ordinance and dogs poop in the, in the, in the, uh, park, there is no mechanism by which we can clean up, clean that mess up before it affects somebody. So, that's-
Unless you hold a council meeting the next day, which you can. I mean, all it takes is three people. If, if it's a concern, heck, you guys could virtual win three council members and do-
Right, I'm, but, but still, you see that, you know, that, I'm just saying, as a, as a example, that's, you know, where that kind of thing can go bad, but that's just me bringing that back up.
Back to approval of the special event permit, Carroll Kennel Club Fast Cat Coursing Trails Memorial Park, August thirtieth and thirty-first. Uh, motion? Got a motion from Nick. Need a second?
Second.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Um, up next, we have a ward of bid, Riffles Land Storm Drain Installation. Jim, you got any comments before I look for a motion?
Actually, just to respond to that last one, um, there is a deposit involved for the special events and an inspection of the park that, the, you know, first business day after, so if they don't clean up, they don't get their, um, deposit back.
How much is their deposit?
There's a stick. Cool. I think two hundred, right? Jim, deposit two hundred?
I said two fifty.
Good thing Lorena's watching.
It might be two fifty. I thought it was two hundred.
Might be two hundred.
All right.
If Lorena texts me with it, I'll let you know.
I was going to say, getting it-
We have a person rec liaison, person rec liaison, or?
Sorry, what, what?
What's, uh?
What just happened?
What's, uh, what's, what's the special event fee, Mr. Liaison?
I don't, I don't know.
I'm just messing with you.
I don't know. One million dollars?
One million, even dollars.
That's right, right. Anyway, all right. Moving ahead? Yeah.
Two hundred.
Two hundred, okay.
Thanks, Lorena.
Boom.
I'll have that for you next time.
There we go. Um, award- Award of bid, Riffles Land Storm Drain Installation. Jim, do you have anything before I go into motion?
Oh, the memo's in the packet. Hopefully, everybody had a chance to read it. Um.
You know, are, are we good solid at the rep, you know, on those references? Because he's way low and it just, that bothers me.
Check that, actually.
Yes.
Okay. I remember that one. That was the one that came in, yeah.
Yeah, you know.
I think the highest was like one ninety and he was-
Yeah, right, well, you're right. And there's, and there's a whole big spectrum. It's not like there's anybody, any clumping of anything.
You wouldn't expect an outlier like that. That stuck out to me, too.
EPW did check the references specifically to see if there were a lot of, if those references experienced change orders and things like that. That was the concern, is that somebody would lowball it and then hit us with a bunch of change orders. And the references confirmed that, that that was not the case. Um, they delivered as promised and they got good reviews from the references when we checked, so, um, that's the recommendation.
Looking for a motion in regards to that? Looking for a second?
Second. There we go.
Additional comments, questions, concerns by council? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those, all those opposed, nay? Carries. Public comment pertaining to agenda items.
Welcome back, Paul.
Hi, guys. Say, you know it's getting late, but I'll be brief. I'll promise to be done by eleven o'clock. Hey, it needs to be said, um, tonight was healthy and constructive discussions. Refreshing, real progress. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, two, uh, points I wanted to make on the sign code exemption ordinance number twelve. Can a city theme or beautification mural or banner be considered or built into this code change at this time? That's probably something that might come up.
You mean like a beautification?
Something that's, so you've seen a lot of Main Streets will have, um,
I would think murals would be an exception and not a sign.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I would think that would be a one-off. To me, that's not covered under the sign ordinance.
Okay, so that is a totally different-
Yes.
And separate issue.
Okay, well, I will say, I will say, I will say, a mural, I will say a mural can be a sign. So honestly, I will recommend to council, they, they probably should consider maybe adding the mural exemption into there. Because I will say, my understanding is a mural can be a sign. I mean, you can definitely make a mural into a sign.
Yes.
Whether it's common, I don't know, um, but-
Well, I think, and, and I think a Main Street Advisory Board down the road would certainly encourage that as a theme.
Look for.
And we all know of a couple buildings that could be perfect for that, assuming the, uh, building owners would be okay with that. So, I'm just thinking of the future and what the potential is.
Okay.
That was, that was mural and statue, you said?
No.
Mural and beautification.
Beautification, okay, got it.
Basically like beautification.
Anything that gives you kind of a good feel about the town. There's something going on here, you know, that kind of stuff.
Right, we just need to make, we just need to make sure that we define what a mural is as opposed to an advertisement. Because, you know, painting, just because you painted somebody's ad on the side of the building doesn't make it a mural. So, I, I think that there maybe need to be a little bit of clarity there and we'll- Probably something like non, non-commercial mural.
On the side of this building.
I mean, you could always incorporate it to where it basically refers back to whenever we do get the Main Street Code signs as permitted by the Main Street Code in the Main Street District as an ex, as an exemption essentially. That'd allow them a little bit more wiggle room and play for.
But yeah, I think that that can be handled separately. I don't think that we do.
I want to throw it out there because I think that's something that will certainly be introduced at some point in time. And relate, and related to, uh, resolution number seven, uh, the legislative priorities.
Yeah.
It's about time. This sounds like a strategic plan to tackle longstanding issues and concerns. Man, you're putting it on the radar screen. I think this is a good idea, even though I agree with kind of the pros and the cons. I think it's nice to have something on the radar screen that you're always looking at and you're thinking about that, uh, that you want to be working on. It doesn't get lost in the, in the shuffle and then all the other things that come along. Good night.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul.
Good night, Paul.
Any additional public comment pertaining to agenda items?
Before you start, can I just say thank you for waiting through all of this?
Yeah, two hours and forty-five minutes for public comment, but I'm blessed that Paul only spoke for a minute or two, so.
On the bright side.
So with the new rules, uh, my name's Alex Kelly. I'm at Twenty Eight Buoy Mill. Uh, just wanted to go over some numerical stuff that you guys were talking a great deal about. Just to make sure you know, I know capital projects are an important part for utility funds, but I mean, looking at just inflows and outflows of your revenue stream for water and sewage, you're at four-point-eight million compared to your outflows of three-point-one. So you should have a surplus of one-point-seven per year to allocate to capital projects. Uh, that may actually not even be enough based on some of the major things we need to do, or it may be sufficient. Uh, the bigger concern is why, as citizens, are we paying for past projects? So thinking, I've only been here for, you know, like, about four years, so my water bill is paying for things that we did ten, fifteen years ago that we've refinanced at higher interest rates now, and why are we not using any of those funds to clear the slate completely? That way, for the next year, we don't have to consider raising rates, um, you know, because our budget would be clear. The other thing also with a five percent reduction, if a consumer uses ten thousand gallons, that's only a ten-dollar decline in their bill, so I don't think that's going to make any kind of massive, uh, impact to the consumers. And when we talk about water, it is income disparity. What I mean by that, if you're in a higher income bracket versus a lower income bracket, you're paying the same. So as a proportion of a, a residence's income, it's disproportionate to the lower income bracket versus property tax is usually more proportional to higher income residences, uh, themselves. So I'm not saying we need to go ahead and raise property tax. I don't want that. But I'm just saying, when we're talking about the grand scheme of things for how our residents, we can't think of, you know, a small section of the residents. We got to think of the town as a whole and what would be a net benefit to the most people, not certain people versus other people. And then lastly, just to kind of go over, one really exciting thing with you guys expanding the police force, uh, so we can respond to calls throughout the week, we may want to consider also expanding the service area. There are plenty of people that live in Tawny Town, but they're not in Tawny Town proper and they're not able to get the services and they're reliant on the Carroll County Sheriff's Department for that. So if we are going to increase the number of officers, we might want to consider how we can help our fellow residences.
Have an MOU, do we not?
So we, I, I will say, Chief, do you have any comments on that? I know we do respond to a couple in the local area when we're the first available to respond to them. Um, I know we've done that at, at Harney. I know we've done that, uh, I think just recently on Trevanian the other day.
Yes, yes, we, uh, we routinely respond.
So I don't know if it's worthwhile exploring selling our services to Carroll County because we would be better equipped to respond to those calls to our own town. And we can actually oversight our police department versus Carroll County. We have no oversight in their abilities. So, nothing I need answers on, but just something to kind of chew on and, and marinate with.
I think the biggest thing would be whether, uh, the county is willing to part with additional funds. They, they already, they already do give us money, um-
And not only that, but the county sheriff's office is patrolling in town.
Yeah, they do, they do patrol in the area.
So, you know, which they hadn't been doing before, so I would be reticent to want to try to lay anything else on them.
And we've all-
Revenue stream possibly.
And we've also leaned on their services, uh, from time to time. You know, one of the recent ones we're going to be looking at is the Drug Task Force. Getting an officer back on there so our, uh, chief and our major and our lieutenant can all be part of that board and we can start, um, again, that's kind of the final step as far as what we can do and as far as drugs in this area goes. You know, we already got the K nine, we're already making more stops on the streets, you know, Drug Task Force is the next natural stop. So again, that's something that Carroll County provides for the most part from when we go into it. The actual cost of it, besides the officer that we provide, is relatively low. But again, we'll talk further on it.
These are just ideas I want the council to consider as they come on board and existing council. No one's expecting anything to change overnight, you know, it might take months, it might take the rest of the year to make progress, but as long as we're thinking of the residents as a whole, I think that would be the most important focus right there, so I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Yeah.
Thanks, Alex.
Additional public comment pertaining to agenda items? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion of adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Second.
Are you in a hurry, hearing?
Yeah, these men have been working all day.